All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission, July 30th, 2019, to order. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under our own legal, civil, liberty, and justice.
All right, roll call.
I will do roll call. Commissioner Takahashi.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Fang.
Here.
Vice Chair Saxina.
Here.
Chair Wong.
Present.
All present, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, yep, let's start with the approval of the minutes. Any comments, questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, let's do a vote. Okay, we will get to oral communications. For those who have interest in talking on the dais, please submit a blue card and you'll get three minutes and a chance to communicate. Before we begin, we've got a full agenda, so we'll be able to chance to provide those comments here, as well as on the specific agenda items. Please name your name and, of course, the agenda item. Before we begin, I just wanted to make some notes that this is a special meeting, it is a very important meeting, and really looking forward to everybody's inputs and thoughts. I think it's very important that we get this community discussion going, and really appreciate everyone being here tonight. So, let's start with the oral communications. What do we have? Someone can pass me these. Here we go.
Chair, just wanted to clarify that these oral communications is typically for items that are not on the agenda and cannot be, because there will be opportunity when we get to the agenda items for specific communication.
Yep, Commissioner Takahashi is completely correct, and I think that is a good note. So, let's start with our first one. Ed Hirschfield, hopefully pronounced your name correct. Please come up.
That is correct. My name is Ed Hirschfield. I've owned my house in Cupertino for 56 years. And I'm here in this item to speak because I want to determine, at least assert that I believe Ms. Moore should recuse herself from the Valco-related items since she's a party to lawsuits which are in contravention of the existing rules. And so, any discussion of ways to change those rules may reflect a vested interest, which should not be the case. That's my statement.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Let's see, David Tuzman, please come to the dais if you're here.
Hey, I'd like to thank the commission members for having the meeting tonight and having us and giving us the opportunity to make our comments. My name is David Tuzman. I'm an employee at Apple down the road, and I was recently made aware of some comments on Nextdoor that the commission member Kitty Moore made characterizing me and the rest of my employees. I'll read it. Frank, "Let's ponder 4,000 residential units at Valco Shopping District catering to Apple Park in your micro-apartments. Apple tech workers are 80% male. That could result in 3,200 men living at Valco. That would increase the male population to 28,771 to 31,971, and the female population from 29,000 to 30,000. That is an 11% increase in the male population and a 2.9% increase in the female population. Will prostitution be legalized for the 3,200 males in the Valco-specific plan 4,000 residential units additions? Bars, strip clubs? This another one for the EIR to study. North Dakota's fracking boom is a great example of societal woes from an unbalanced population." And then February 26th, Frank, "3,200 single males living at Valco Shopping District within a couple hundred yards of Cupertino High School. Are these underage high school females the young ladies who will go there to meet Apple professionals?" It's pretty speechless when I read this characterization, generalization of so many people, unfounded, baseless, disgusting. So, I thought I could give you some suggestions of other fear mongering you could do. There are some Mexican-Americans at Apple that I don't know, you might be concerned that they're drug dealers or rapists. Some transgender folks at Apple who you could post on Nextdoor saying people avoid restrooms when they're nearby them for fear of their daughter's safety. Or, like myself, there's Jews at Apple, so you could propagate the myth that we crush Gentile children's bones to make our matzah. Just some suggestions to your outlandish statements, completely unfounded and disgusting. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for coming here. I'd like to bring our former Chair of the Planning Commission up. Are you here for oral communications or another item?
Valco.
Valco, okay, I'll save that for that. Jennifer Griffin, please come up.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, a former female tech worker who was a Unix system administrator in a male-dominated environment 30 to 40 years ago. Believe me, I know what it is to be a woman tech worker in a male-dominated environment. Women have to be extremely assertive, take care of themselves, and rise to the top. And this was true 30 to 40 years ago. It's not just an issue now. There have never been a lot of women in the tech environment. But people, there were us. I was a programmer, I was a Unix system administrator. I ran through two startups, and you all know what encompasses startups. Everything you could imagine. So therefore, I live in Cupertino by choice. I came here when I went to work at Tandem. If anybody does not know what Tandem is, you need to go educate yourself about the history of Silicon Valley. I think it's very important that we realize that we have four male members on the Planning Commission and one female member, and we have one female member on our city council. Therefore, we need to make sure that we keep the women that are here, and any woman that is on our Planning Commission or our city council for Cupertino is of the best character. They are educated, they are aware of everything that is going on in Silicon Valley and the state and federally. Therefore, I think it's very important that we have the Planning Commission that we have and the city council that we have. I value public input, I value diversity on our commissions and our councils, and I value living in Cupertino just as much as the city I grew up in, which I will not name. But I chose Cupertino, and I am going to be here through thick and thin. I will be here. I've been coming to these meetings since 2003. I rarely miss them. But if you want to know what the reality of Cupertino is, you look at the people on our Planning Commission and our city council and our other commissions. They are the highest caliber in this country. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we're closing out oral communications. And do we have any written communications we need to share or consent calendar items?
The written communication came in forms of emails that we receive, which is in a packet and displayed for the public.
Okay, sounds good. All right, well, let's begin on item number two. I think we've got some fine staff members here. We're doing a study session on SB 35. Let me read that. Study session regarding application and review procedures for projects proposed pursuant to Senate Bill.
Chair, I'm so sorry, before you start, I think Commissioner Moore needs to make a...
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to make a brief statement before the Planning Commission proceeds to item two. Agenda item two is a study session regarding application and review procedures for projects proposed pursuant to Senate Bill SB 35. As most people here are aware, I am one of four petitioners in a lawsuit currently pending in court relating to the Valco SB 35 application. Based on my involvement in that lawsuit, I am, out of an abundance of caution, and to avoid any potential appearance of impropriety, recusing myself from deliberations and any commission recommendation on agenda item two.
Okay. We will call you back when we get to the next item. Thank you. I guess I'm waiting, so, thanks. All right, so, we're going to start a study session regarding application and review procedures for projects proposed pursuant to SB 35. Part of this is continued from our Council July 23 Planning Commission meeting. Staff, please introduce yourselves and share with us the presentation. From a process perspective, commissioners are going to be asking questions of the staff, and once they're done, we'll have an open forum for a conversation. We'll do oral communications there, and then what we'll do is we'll deliberate and move on. So, okay, all right.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. From the city attorney's office, we have Caitlin Brown tonight to present on the SB 35 checklist item, answer any questions you may have on the item during your discussion, and then if you have questions regarding any action to take on this item tonight, you can direct them to me. Thanks.
Thank you. We're here tonight asking in this study session that the Planning Commission review the draft procedures and application package for SB 35 projects and provide comments to staff to consider, and forward to the city council for their own study session, which is currently scheduled for August 6th next week. So just a brief overview of what I will be discussing. I'm going to give the background and information on Senate Bill 35, SB 35. I will give an overview of the Housing and Community Development's SB 35 guidelines, and I'll also discuss the city's draft resolutions that includes procedures for reviewing and processing SB 35 applications, and includes an eligibility checklist and separate proposed application forms. The procedures and eligibility checklist will likely eventually be adopted via resolution, and the application forms that are included in your packet will be maintained by the Planning Department and not formally adopted. So, let's get into it. SB 35 was passed in 2017 and became effective in 2018. It requires the city to use a streamlined ministerial review process for certain multifamily housing developments that meet city's objective planning standards and meet SB 35's own objective planning standards, that provide at least half of the housing as affordable to low-income households and meet other wage and labor requirements. SB 35 imposes quite strict timelines. At most, the city has 180 days from the application's submission to the final approval. And SB 35 was amended in 2018 with clarifying amendments. The Housing and Community Development Department Estate Agency's guidelines, these were adopted in 2018 and became effective in 2019. They apply prospectively only to projects proposed after January 1st, 2019. And they cannot be used to invalidate or require modification to a project that was processed under SB 35 prior to January 1st, 2019. And while they're called guidelines, they actually are formally adopted regulations and have the same dignity as statutes. And SB 35 specifically directed HCD to create these guidelines. And why we're here tonight is because these guidelines direct local governments to provide information about their SB 35 process and application materials that are required. We're also here tonight because the city's fiscal year 2019, 2020 work program also directed the city to develop procedures for mandated streamlined project approvals and administrative approvals. This was a priority-setting item in the Community Livability section of the work program. All right, so let's talk about the process that we are proposing tonight. In order for a project that qualifies under SB 35, the applicant must submit an SB 35 application, a certificate for compliance with the eligibility requirements, and all application materials specified in the application checklist. The city will post this application to the city's webpage within two business days and keep it updated throughout the application project process so that the public can remain informed. The next step will be for the city to determine if the application is complete. They will do this within five business days, and all the information in the application checklist is required to figure out whether the project is consistent with objective planning standards. The city will deny the application if it is incomplete. The applicant is free to resubmit a new application that will start the SB 35 timelines over again. So what kind of review will these projects have if they are complete? If the application is complete, the Department of Community Development will make an initial written determination of the proposed project's consistency with objective planning standards. The city council and the Planning Commission will hold a joint, noticed, open, and public meeting to assess the project's compliance with the required objective planning standards. This meeting will also be noticed pursuant to the municipal codes requirements for development permits. At this meeting, the city council and the Planning Commission will also review any application for a subdivision map. The review meeting will focus only on objective standards. That means standards that require little to no subjective discretion, and will be held at least five days before the expiration of the consistency review period. And the reason we're holding a joint hearing between the Planning Commission and the city council is because of the tight timelines in SB 35. So after this joint meeting and before the end of the 60 or 90 days that constitutes the consistency review period, the city manager will send the applicant a letter stating either that the project is consistent with the objective planning standards or explaining which standard or standards the project conflicts with. And if the project is given this written consistency determination, the city will use the remaining time to finalize the approval documents and impose any standard conditions of approval that are objective and broadly applicable to development within the city. And they will do this within 90 or 180 days, depending on the size of the proposed development. On the other hand, if a project is inconsistent with any of the objective planning standards, the city will go ahead and deny the application. The applicant can choose to submit a corrected or revised application, and this will be treated as a new application subject to the SB 35 timelines. I wanted to briefly discuss two items on the eligibility checklist. We pulled the eligibility checklist from SB 35 and the guidelines, and also included information specific to the 2/3s residential calculation. SB 35 projects, if they're mixed-use, must devote 2/3s of the square footage to residential rather than non-residential uses. Our guidelines, our, the city's process and eligibility checklist uses the definitions in SB 35 and the guidelines to calculate the gross square footage of residential versus the gross square footage of non-residential development. And we also in the eligibility checklist include information about the city's below-market-rate ordinance. The city's objective standards from this ordinance will apply to any SB 35 project. So for example, Cupertino requires a certain percentage of a development, of units in a development to be affordable to very low-income renters, while SB 35 only requires units to be affordable to low-income renters. But to qualify for streamlined approval, the development either needs to provide units affordable to very low-income renters or alternatively pay the impact fee and still provide the amount of affordable housing required by SB 35. So at this point, I'm going to open up, back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Commissioners, any questions? Maybe we should start with the draft resolution document and then look at the checklist. Maybe that's a good way, if you've got any comments or questions. Anything with the draft resolution? You're strangely silent. How would you like to do it?
People comment in whatever way. I had sent a set of comments into the director and to the city attorney's office, so we can do that. Those are almost all, they apply mostly, one to the staff report and the rest to the checklist. So, you know, we can integrate with the checklist if you want.
Sounds good. Yeah, start with some of your comments. I think that'd be helpful for everyone here to hear, even a public forum.
Okay. The first one was just a comment regarding the role of the joint meeting. I think that it, in the staff report, this is on page 2 to 3, the draft proposal calls for the establishment of this joint meeting. I don't question that that's appropriate, but the wording was unusual because I think in the staff report, it was a little ambiguous as to whether, you know, it had the appearance that that was an approval meeting, when in fact, the city manager is the one who is responsible for granting the approval. So this is an input, that the consistency meeting is an input to the city manager's decision process, not the final decision point. And I think that that's something that was clear in the resolution, but was not in the staff report. So I would suggest a correction on that to make it clear.
That makes sense. Thank you.
I do have a question, though, and I'm just trying to ask, on Section 5(c) in that draft resolution, is that, is five days enough time to do that? Would staff need more than 14 days or 21 days? Just want to make sure before final consistency determination is made.
Five days was what was proposed by staff, but we can recommend a different number to the city council.
Because I think some of these issues may be very complex, and people might want to be able to get enough time to connect before approval is made, but that's just a suggestion, so.
Thank you.
The five days is for evaluating the completeness.
Consistency.
Okay, is it completeness or consistency?
There's actually two five-day periods.
I'm talking 5(c) for the first one, yes.
Yeah.
The second one, I wasn't sure what timeframes you guys need to actually process a complicated resolution or complicated submittal.
So, just to be clear, there is, at the beginning, at the outset, upon the receipt of the application, there's five days to determine whether all the materials are present.
That's right.
And that's the point of the checklist. And then the other five days, the 5(c), I believe, yeah, the 5(c) is five days before the end of the consistency letter, which would be 90, yeah, 60, 45 to 90 days, so 40 or 85 days. So that should be plenty of time to actually do, you know, a serious review of the application.
I just want to make sure council and staff have the right amount of time, and it's misfortunate that the five days all sits in the Section 5. So that makes it a little bit more confusing. So, okay, all right. Anybody else? I think it might make sense just to go down it, if there's questions as we go through each of them. We're currently on, for those following, we're in Section 5, I think. So, any other sections people want to address or talk about? I do have a question about 5e on, let me make sure I'm on the right section, on density bonus. Oh, that's on submittal, sorry. On submittal, I do have a question. It says, "It seems like we can submit multiple plans in this process at the same time. I'd like to make a recommendation that plans can only be submitted and submitted in serial fashion, that meaning you can't run two plans at the same time in a dual-parallel process."
So for example, an applicant couldn't submit multiple SB 35 applications for the same...
Or submit a specific plan application as well at the same time.
Got it, thank you.
Because that would overwhelm the staff in terms of what they're able to do, so.
I guess a question or little discussion on that. If it's in the course of working with city staff to determine kind of an optimized plan, I could see that being kind of a possible path forward that would aid both the applicant and city staff, unless the intent is you want it to be, here's a plan, yes, no, bring me another rock type of situation. Is that what you're advocating?
I think so, just so that plans are considered in serial fashion and they're not in parallel. Someone could say, hey, let me submit three different plans and see what sticks.
So I guess a question for city attorney, would that possibly be viewed as somewhat obstructionary in terms of getting a SB 35 project approved?
Preventing multiple plans from being submitted at the same time.
Right.
But we'd have to look into that. I can't make a determination right now, but we'll include it in our recommendations for the council and look at it in the meantime.
Also to staff, just a background question. How many current SB 35 applications are in the state? Hopper.
In the state?
Yes, in the state.
I think in handful cities like, you know, Berkeley, Cupertino, San Francisco. I want to say maybe like six.
Right. So just to, from a practical standpoint, the odds of another SB 35 project coming our way, are they pretty low? Or would you say TBD, unknown?
There's no way to determine that.
Right. It's a function of density and available land to develop, I would assume, correct?
As well as variety of other reasons, right?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
To dwell on Chairman Wong's comment about multiple SB 35 applications, or multiple applications for the same property, I would, unless it's against the spirit of the law, I would strongly recommend that. Because, you know, as managers of people who work hard, having multiple things on the same topic, being in the same office going around can lead to confusion and can lead to, lead to a situation where people lose context about which application they're considering and what they're considering. And I think it almost puts an undue burden on the staff to be able to cognizant of what exactly are they reviewing when they're reviewing things simultaneously. Given the fact that the period is about 90 days for the city to make a decision, I think that's a reasonable amount for somebody to wait for, especially for projects which might span over many years. So, I would seriously encourage the staff to review that as long as it is not against the spirit of the SB 35.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, multiple applications versus multiple plans as a different item? Or do you, do you want to be more specific? Because I don't know...
Well, I'm not sure whether you can have, I'm not sure about distinction between plans and applications here, whether you can have multiple plans for the same application. I'll just defer to the city staff for that.
Okay.
So I'm a little curious, of course, this is all new ground. I'm curious, in the event that there, the staff raised an issue, is there, what is the mechanism through which, through which the applicant could resolve that issue? Is that only by being rejected and starting the process over again?
That's correct. That's the process we've put forward.
Okay. So I would be, I would, because, I mean, you know, this is, it's an interesting, you know, the intention here is that it be a binary decision. You know, it's a binary decision of approved or not approved, but...
I mean, you can keep submitting as many plans as you want and keep getting rejected as many times as you want, or approved.
Yeah, my concern on that is just you're creating this complete obstructionary environment, and I don't think that's really necessary at this point in time. I don't advocate multiple plans either, but I just wanted clarity on that.
The intent is not an obstructionary environment. I think the intent is that for citizens and input to be able to...
Well, you just said that, yeah, just keep submitting plans, resubmitting, resubmitting. I mean, if the response of the city staff is, no, that plan's not compliant, try again, that is not working with a potential developer to come up with a compliant project over the course of the development of the plans, if you will. I mean, that's currently how plans work. City staff is integrally involved in really working with the developer to make sure the project that comes forward is compliant, is consistent with architecture, all kinds of elements, which the checklist is trying to take care of to a great extent. But it's a checklist, and there needs to be that, that working together, if you will. Otherwise, seems to me it could be trouble for us, that's all.
So I would use the example, in the, in the actual form, in the checklist form, there's, there are a number, so a number of my comments were related to things which, having watched this process pretty closely, there were a number of comments there of things that will be required in that checklist. things that will be required in that checklist, which I would not have known about. So, for instance, you needed to have drawings of the site fifty feet beyond the actual site in question, plus adjustments for public streets. So, if, for instance, that were rendered incorrectly on a plan, it sounds like, that would be an example of something where it seems like it would be strange to reject the application if the, if the capture of, you know, the adjoining site is incorrect, as opposed to correcting it.
Some jurisdictions do allow during the second review period, so after the sixty or ninety days, they do allow people to, or applicants to correct submissions. That's not how we have it set up now, but that's certainly an option.
So, I think that that's actually, that actually would be a good way to state it. I think that after the, well, I don't know, you know, that after the letter of compliance is issued, I mean, one of the things that's interesting, an interesting thing to me, observation to me, was that this meeting, the joint compliance meeting, happens before the compliance letter goes out. So, you know, that does mean that anything that, anything that pops up in that second half of the approval period, you know, there wouldn't be a public hearing. And it's, I believe this, this process would preclude, you know, would not allow for that. So, I think that I would actually consider something along the lines of what you said, that after the letter of compliance has been issued, that, you know, that there'd be a mechanism through which modifications would be accepted without, without a restart of the application.
Anyone else on this comment, for this topic?
Right now, is there an appeals process at all for, if the application is removed? Is it returned as, or not accepted?
No, SB 35 does not set up an appeals process. I mean, there's appeal to a court, but there's not an appeal to a city body.
I believe the intention of this is really to make sure that residents have input, and council has some input, in the ministerial approval process. So, anywhere where we can provide input, and input at a timely manner, I think is very important. So. I do have a question here, and it's really about density.
It's objective input only, though.
Um, yeah, objective input. So, on the density bonus, is there anywhere that we can make sure that it's consistent with the general plan, and also make sure that we submit a formal baseline, pre-bonus? That way, we know what that bonus, what that number on the baseline is, so like, so that when we get to understanding what the density bonus is, that that part is clear, so things are upfront?
So, the city has their density bonus ordinance, and if you want to require anything specific to a density bonus project, you will need to amend the density bonus ordinance, so that it will apply to all projects that are requesting density bonuses going forward.
It's not specifically to the density bonus ordinance. I think it's just making sure that we have a baseline of what that, what the original, the original allocation was, and then what the bonus was, so that's clearly stated. So, I don't, I'm not sure that's completely in the ordinance, and so, if someone can look into that, I think that would help. I've had that from numerous comments from, from the public.
Thank you. We can do that.
Actually, maybe that's a question for staff. That normally appears on the front page of the plans, at least it has in the past. So, the calculation that, that shows the number of, unit number, and the allowed number, plus the bonus.
Yes, that's correct.
It is showed there, but the, it doesn't specify specifically what the size of the units are, what, you know, what types of units those are.
I think Chair Wong's looking for perhaps more detail, maybe illustration of some sort, so we can certainly explore that.
So, codify that before it goes.
But, but things like size requirement are part of the density bonus law, so that that would not be a...
No, it's not part of that law, but it's something we can ask for as a requirement to get a better understanding.
Yeah, but if you ask for something that's not part of the law, I think that that's, that's outside the bounds of what you can ask for.
If you ask for it for every project, then that will be okay.
Yeah, it's objective. You can ask for it for every project, in the review process.
Yes. But we'll recognize that that does not exist today.
No, and that's a suggestion for a future ordinance. Anything else on the resolution? Anybody else has any other comments? Guys, want to move to the checklist?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to the checklist.
Well, I can get a few here. So, application form, item 1C, there was just a suggestion of wording. The existing wording was excluding residential square footage devoted to density bonus units, and I think you actually mean something like derived from, as opposed to devoted to. So, just a wording to consider. And then, there's actually a typographical error in that sentence. There's an extra paren- parentheses.
Parentheses, yeah.
Yeah.
Other than the parentheses that's there, I was wondering if we could clarify that, if we can actually make parking spaces may not count towards the residential square footage, so that we have adequate parking for residents?
So, under the HCD guidelines, parking is included in the residential calculation, but the new, but the way we will calculate commercial or non-residential will also take into account parking.
So, we're doing the same HCD guidelines on the commercial mixed use in that way?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
But that's not, that will come through separately, the change to, the change to the calculation of commercial parking, you know, non-residential parking, right? That would be a municipal code change that's not...
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question. So, the HCD guidelines specify that it's gross development square footage for residential versus gross square, development square footage for non-residential. And they include parking for both residential and non-residential in that calculation. So, for that reason, we can use parking for both residential and non-residential square footage.
So, yeah, so what could happen is that a developer could use their parking instead of build more and larger units, or would it be the other way, where they're using the parking square footage to reduce the amount of residential space?
I think at this point, we're at least comparing apples to apples.
Okay.
So, when we're calculating the square footage for residential, we'll include the parking for residential, and when we're calculating the square footage for the non-residential, we'll include parking for non-residential.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
But just to be clear, you still have to meet all the requirements associated with location to transit, et cetera, et cetera, in terms of that, that element of the parking, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Let's move on to number two. Anything there? Want to jump to the next one that you guys have comments on? Looks like everyone did good homework here. I was hoping we could change the language on 13, where we're at it. 13, as it does today, reads, "Is the project site a hazardous waste site that is listed pursuant government code section 659625?" I was hoping if we can change that to say, "Is the project site a hazardous waste site that is on any list pursuant to government code section 65962.5", and just leave it at that, and remove section 13A.
So, for the, the items on the checklist that relate to issues that are being litigated right now, we've tried to leave them intentionally sort of open-ended to not sort of anticipate what a judge might say on this issue. We want to be able to move forward as quickly as possible with this now. Once we have a determination on these and other issues, we could, could make amendments to this in the future.
Why, because these are forward-looking, why would that be relevant? Just to help me understand.
For the same reason that we recommend not discussing in substance the matters that are being litigated right now, and avoiding any possibility of a commission action, a recommendation influencing the litigation in one way or another.
So, could we actually record that in our thing, that this section may potentially be revised?
Could you do what?
Can we record or note?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, I should have mentioned that you can definitely include this in the minutes and the recommendation to the council.
I'd like to make that as a recommendation to the council and see what they do. 20A, anyone else? I'm jumping to 20, unless you've got something else.
We can hop back.
You can hop back, all right. You will hop back. All right, sounds good. 20A, I think it's really important here, that the applicant must identify and commit to location of density bonus units. A lot of situations where developers put them in the worst possible places, and so, where do those density bonus exist? Making sure they get enough square footage, making sure they have enough light, making sure it's not like in the back boil room of an area. So, I was wondering if we could do something about that. I mean, they should have the plans. They should know where these density bonus units are going to go. I mean, if it's a 500-square-foot box, well, let's call it out, right? Or is it, is it something livable in a thousand-square-feet studio, or what is it? What is it? So, can we do that?
I would assume that is in the plans that are brought to the city for approval.
Why not codify it?
Right. Well, they're, they are codified in the plans, in terms of where those, you want to specifically know this, identify which ones are...
They're on the map. Show me the X where it is, so we know for sure. We've got a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of wiggle room, that I want to make sure that if we're going to provide affordable housing, that folks get quality affordable housing, and it's not just an afterthought, and just a way to get a density bonus in play.
Right. Alls I'm saying is that specific plans have to be brought to the city for approval.
This is SB 35 checklist.
Well, the city staff still is going to look at the plans and, and make sure that, so, I don't know, just whether or not it's redone or not, is my question.
So, I guess Commissioner, Chairman Wong, you want the plans to explicitly state which are the density bonus units going to be as and when they're submitted?
I do.
I do.
I definitely think it's important, because if we want affordable housing, we want to make sure it's good affordable housing.
And Commissioner Takahashi, you feel...
Well, I'm just saying that the bonus units aren't necessarily the ones allocated for affordable housing, right? They're, they're more units. They could be, the whole part of the bonus, density bonus is the person's going to get more units, right? I think your concern is, what are the sizes of those units, and also an assumption that...
And the quality of those units, yeah.
That those bonus units are specifically the ones identified for below market, but I think, as a whole...
Two separate things happening.
Right.
Yes, I'm putting them together, yes.
Right. So...
Yeah, so I would, I would actually suggest we not put them together. I think that, again, it's been unusual, in the plans that have come before us, that the, that when BMR units are provided, that those are identified ahead of time. So, I would, I think it's important to do a search of the legislation to understand whether that is a requirement or not, and whether it can be imposed or not. And then, and then, separate from that, I'd actually commented, you know, I'd notated about the bonus units. Now, the bonus units, the, you know, Commissioner Takahashi's point is the bonus units may be different units than the BMR units. So, I believe that this was asking for those to be identified as well.
As the same as well.
Yes. And that one's actually, I think that's actually challenging, because, you know, you know, are you asking for the form that the building, the final form of the building may not, there may not be a version of it that has thirty-five percent, you know, that's two stories less, less tall, or something like that.
I believe that most of the developers have the staff to actually know where this is going to go, and the business models. Are you telling me that they wouldn't have that before they submit?
No, that they, they know the number of units. They know the number of units that they're...
They know what they're going to rent it out for. They have a business plan. They've submitted it to their boards.
Right, but I don't think, I don't think they identify specific units. I mean, I think most BMR plans want to spread out those BMR units throughout the development.
Yeah, and that's why they should be identified, so you know where they are, so it's not clustered all the BMR units in the back behind a garage. I mean, that's really what I'm trying to prevent.
I think that, yeah, I guess the question is, Chairman Wong, should we add BMR or bonus here? Like, when we look for specific locations, should we...
I think I am asking for two things here, and I put them together. If it's easier to separate them, I would say it's important to identify where the density bonus units are, and then where the BMR units are, if they're doing that.
And just, so, the counterpoint to that is, I would say that the BMR mitigation manual does speak to identifying, you know, to some amount of identification, but one of the points in there that's very important is, that if you were to use, utilize certain kinds of financing, low-income housing tax credit, for instance, that would have a requirement, a federal requirement, that funding would cause those units to be co, you know, to be located together, because that is a requirement of getting that funding. And that our BMR, the BMR manual recognizes that today, so that, so, you know, there's a desire, there's a desire that those units be spread throughout, you know, kind of evenly throughout the project, but that's something that's overridden when, when the federal funding requirements exceed. And that, and that is, in fact, the case for anything where, where there's an external factor, you know, such as the duration of the, of the requirement for BMR time, you know, if it's fifty-five years instead of forty-five, that kind of thing.
A question there. Are the LIHTC credits, SB 35 projects eligible for the LIHTC credits, the federal credits?
Yes, it certainly could be.
In the history of projects similar to that, how many places like Cupertino are eligible for those types of funding? I mean, that's very rare.
No, it's not rare at all. It's not rare at all. It's just a matter of, you know, do you have the proper profile to qualify for, you know, qualify for such a project?
I believe profile's the optimum word here, so. Anyways, can we look into this? And I believe, like, there are two counterpoints, and note those, Mr., Commissioner Fung's point, as well as our points over here.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Right now, in the application materials, we do ask that the applicant will identify both the density bonus units, so that it's easy for staff to calculate the two-thirds square footage, because that two-thirds calculation excludes density bonus units.
Correct.
And we also ask that they identify where the affordable units are, so that the city staff can make sure that they are spread throughout the project.
And they commit that on the plan?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We won't have any cases where people forget that they can't build a certain type of housing, because they don't know how to do that, or anything like that, right?
Well, actually, I think that, I would actually point that this, what you're asking for will have the unintended side effect of causing the BMR units, or the bonus units to be, to be dedicated to BMR will be smaller, because they're actually not counted in the ratio calculation. So, they're going to take the large units in the ratio calculation, and then they're going to put the BMR units in the small units, so.
I think they already do that, and that's what I'm trying to prevent, is make sure people actually have big, bigger BMR units. All right, well, anyways, I think it's noted.
Yeah, but you won't, that's, that won't be the effect. It won't be the effect of having it that way, right? It'll be, it'll be the opposite. You'll, the, if the bonus, if bonus units don't, don't participate in the calculation of the square foot utilization, then those will be the small units.
We've got differing opinions, but let's definitely note that for council, so appreciate that.
We will. Thank you.
We're on to 21. Anyone else?
Well, let me pick up some of these, maybe, maybe we're backing up a little and pick up some of these. So, I had a concern on a number of items where, I believe there were five items that, that are roughly the same issue. The, the issue here is that the checklist includes very specific requirements. These may exist as objective requirements, but, you know, I don't, I don't know where they are. So, for instance, on page 13, there was an item regarding landscape plans, and it had a line in there that said, "Trees shall be a minimum of twenty-four gallon, and shrubs a minimum of five-gallon size." Now, that, that may be an objective standard that exists somewhere with regard to landscape plan review, but it doesn't, it doesn't actually appear in the municipal code. So, so I think that there are, in the checklist, it seems like you want, I would think it would be desirable to identify the things which are, you know, directly germane to the SB 35 approval, such as the ratio of residential to non-residential space. And, and then, for these other requirements, which were things like, that the landscape plan be compliant, that it would be better to, to put those in in such a way that it doesn't appear that there's a, a new standard being applied on this SB 35 application. You know, I don't know, I don't know how I would know what the minimum shrub size is, other than, when I submit the plan, somebody reviews it. They must be following some rule, and, and passing it back, but that's not, that's actually not something that would be visible to the public or to the applicant. So, I would actually suggest maybe to structure the list such that there are points which are directly related to the SB 35 application, and then, and then to have a list of these other items which are, you know, you can decide what the level of detail... other items which are, you know, you can decide what the level of detail is, but that will be the things that need to be submitted as part of the packet so that it can be reviewed. I understand the reason, in the discussion that, that I had with the director, the reason for that is that these are things that they would ask for during the course of the review for compliance. It is, it is definitely better, I certainly agree it's better to have that upfront in a checklist, but when you ask for, I don't know, another example, early on it asked for the number of parking spaces, and, and there are certain SB 35 configurations, if you're not in a transit zone, where the, where the parking requirement, you know, you do need to be compliant, but in, for a transit SB 35 application, you know, transit-served location, there's no requirement. So, having that, having that as a large requirement in the checklist, it sort of seems a little odd.
Yeah, actually...
Is it, is it odd, or, sorry, Commissioner Saxina?
So, we, it goes on to say that larger trees may be required depending on the project location, size, or other conditions, which is, it's not clear. So, are we gonna say that we will, we will have some minimum criteria and well-defined things, and those objective standards should be met? Like, when would we want to have the larger trees?
I, I thought this was really to make it easier for the developer to understand what the objective standards were upfront, right? I mean, I think that, was that the intention of staff here?
Yes.
I mean, wanna make it easy and clear to the developers so that they can know what to build, and it's clear, it's clarified, and they can get through, the checklist is clear, it simplifies the process.
I, I agree, it's just if you have no way of seeing that outside of this checklist, if it appears, if the requirement for 24-inch box trees appears only in the SB 35 checklist, that seems like there's something that's not quite right there.
Let's validate that it's an objective standard throughout the city, then.
Yeah, we'll take a second, look at that and make sure they're all...
I think that's very important, so.
Right, so, so I would actually, I highlighted that on a number of these things. Let's see, it was location and dimensions, this is checklist page, one of the items that I would definitely recommend as a important thing to do is that the current list is structured as a bullet point, so that it's very difficult to direct somebody to a specific point. So, I'd say on page nine, location and dimensions, there was, I believe this was the 50-foot thing, I can go and look if that, if it's not. There were a number of things which seemed to be beyond the scope of, of the actual project, and, again, it's just a matter of, if that is in fact the objective standard, then, then it should be clearer in general through whatever mechanism. Otherwise, I would collect that up as we would hope to see these, these items, and then direct people to the, to the place where they would get that information. Same thing with density bonus. This was, this, you know, we discussed this a little bit. Density bonus calculations are regularly called out in the plan set, I've seen that every time, that the density bonus has been used, but haven't seen specific units highlighted before. So, I'm curious whether that is, whether that's something that's being, that's being asked for, something that's being asked for as an exception here on, on the SB 35 rather than, rather than as part of the standard application process. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, that was specifically so that staff would be able to calculate that two-thirds square footage requirement?
Okay, yeah, and, and so understood on that one. And then, let's see, and then the other one, the other one that had popped up there was page 15, photo simulations, you know, there was, there's a requirement that the plans be drawn, and this is a normal requirement, the plans be drawn without landscape, so you know what the building looks like. And then there was a requirement for photo simulations or elevations that show you what the thing, what the project would look like with landscaping, presumably. Again, I'm curious what objective standard that, that serves, and whether that's, whether, you know, photo simulation, is that really a requirement, or is that something that was nice, that they wanted to ask for here? And, and that just should be clarified, one way or the other.
I wish, since we're in Cupertino, we could ask for an ARVR model, so people can actually walk in and see what it's like, but...
Yeah, but I think some people would find that to be, that would actually be an example of something that's chilling the process, right?
I understand that, I'm just saying it would be very interesting so people could actually experience it, and I think developers would love that, I think the citizens and residents would love that. But I'm not asking that for requirement, I'm just making a comment on that. On 21, I do have a question, though, maybe we can add something here that, especially when we get to concessions and benefits, right? That's always some murky process, people worry it's like a backroom deal. Maybe city council should hold a public hearing over concessions and benefits made, and maybe that's a way to add something to the checklist, just so people, the public are aware and it's transparent.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are, that's not something that's subject to, you know, the...
It's in the DA, I know that.
The applicant, well, the applicant that applies for, that applies for the density bonus has the choice of, you know, the only, the only decision there is whether those things are allowed or not allowed.
I mean, to clarify this, I think in the density bonus law, it's in section 1954, and the approval body is in section 19 dot 12 dot 030 for city council, so, I mean, that's one of them, but I'm just saying, maybe there's a way we can make sure it's clarified what those are, so.
We can look into that, thanks.
Thank you, really appreciate it. Commissioner, is there anything else to add before we get to public comment?
Yeah, I, I guess I just, I'll, I'll continue to raise a concern there that I think that, you know, adding a public hearing, I mean, you know, I guess you'll, you'll...
I mean, there's a deadline in this process, either way, you're stuck between the limited deadline of getting the approval, it's fast-tracked, but getting more community input should be important. I mean, you're working on a, it's a fixed deadline.
But it's not a, there's, so this is, so first of all, this is an objective rule, the, the demonstration of making housing more affordable is the justification for, for the, for the exemptions. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, this is, this is not an issue where there's going to be a big public discussion about it. I mean, people might, might not like it, but it's a, it's a clearly defined law.
Well, I think the Chairman Wong's point is that if we are doing concessions, waivers, or reduction of standards, they should be upfront and clear and visible for all. If there is no concession, there is no reduction in standards, there is no waiver, I guess, I would agree with you, but if the city is doing that, then it should be more transparent and, and visible to public.
So, so when you have the joint meeting, you could cover this, you certainly, I mean, I would, I would expect that this would come up as a point of discussion, but this isn't a point of, I don't like it, that is not something that you can do.
See, in some way, a waiver or reduction of standards would be facilitating a project to go through if, because there's something minor which it doesn't meet, which the city waives and say go through, because that's, otherwise it's not a waiver, or it's not a reduction of standards. And it's saying if you're doing that as a city to encourage it, let the public be aware, and that's all.
Well, you're actually, but the city doesn't grant that, it's the state that granted that, to facilitate the production of housing.
Well, no, but the state doesn't mandate a waiver or a reduction of standards.
It does, that's the density bonus law.
It only applies to the density bonus law.
But there are a lot of other things...
When you, when you, when you qualify under the density bonus law for additional units, you also earn waivers and exemptions.
You get two concessions, the question is, we need to define what those concessions are at that point, and I think we're just trying to be clear about that in the process.
No, you don't have a choice about what the concessions are, you may find that they are not compliant, and that's something that, that's a good cause, if somebody says, hey, you know, I'm, I'm asking for this waiver, and, and, and you, in, in the joint review session, in the qualification session, you say, well, you know, that, you're asking for something that you can't ask for. I mean, that's a perfectly, that's a perfectly reasonable thing to discuss, but I think that the decision is objective by the rules of the state.
The decision is objective, and it's ministerial approval, but there should always be places for residents to provide input, and for the public to private input, and to understand what has happened. So, that's really why the request to actually make that noted, to understand what benefits and what concessions have been made, so.
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any problem about it being communicated, and that's something that you saw with the, you know, that was a, that was actually an issue in the Valco SB 35, you know, the concessions that were asked for were, were different than the ones that, you know, there, there was a request that was made, a change that was made at the request of the staff, to use three instead of two.
I mean, I think a lot of the problem we have is, is, you know, things don't seem to be very apparent or transparent to, to the residents, and wherever we can do that in the process, at least give them a voice, I think that's important. I understand that it's a ministerial review, but to take away that, you know, belief that there's an opaqueness to the process, let's make sure it's transparent, that's all I'm making the recommendation for.
It's just, it's, so I would just say that there's a limitation on, you can receive the input, but there's a limitation on, on your ability to act on it.
Definitely, definitely, I think nothing would change that.
We understand that, but having that input is, I think, important to the public process and the discussion, so. Any more comments, Commissioner Feng, Commissioner Saxina, Commissioner Takahashi? Okay, let's move to oral. Ed Hirschfield.
Hi, I'm the same Ed Hirschfield who spoke earlier.
Hold on, please go to the mic.
Blank, what?
It's by the, by the monitor.
On the right.
The monitor, the, yeah, speaking to the mic there.
Okay, can you hear me?
We got you now, thank you.
I'm the same Ed Hirschfield who spoke earlier.
Yes.
So, I won't repeat that. I'm dealing with a huge lack of understanding. It seems to me that the SB 35 project, which has been approved, remains approved, and nothing that we can do here will change that, is that correct?
I'll leave that to the attorneys, but I don't think we're talking about the current project in question, we're talking about future projects, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted a clarification there. It seems to me that the process you're trying to put in place does not take into account economic viability, and that by establishing the densities that you are establishing now, you are mandating economically not viable development. And by doing that, you're basically outlawing, outlawing any, any development going forward unless there is a huge economic change in the area, and property values go down, and the value of the properties in this area are substantially reduced. I mean, you're saying that you can only build so many houses on, you know, per acre on land, and by doing that, you're establishing the fact that whoever owns property at this point is gonna have to take a huge loss to comply with these regulations. It seems to me, under those circumstances, you're putting a huge penalty on, on current property owners. And my concern is that you will open the city up to liability for the kinds of losses that might be accrued as a result of these regulations. So, I think there has to be some sort of a tie between the property values in the city and the densities that you're mandating, and I don't see that here at all, and so I think you're establishing, I think it's non compos mentis, you're not using your heads in terms of establishing rules that can be complied with, while you're saying, we don't want any more development in the city, unless people are willing to take very substantial losses in, in the property values that they have currently. Now, admittedly, you don't have a mandate to sustain property values for property owners, that's not what you have to do, but, by gosh, if I were a property owner, and by the way, I only own six tenths of an acre, so, this isn't anything that particularly pertains to me in this city, but I think that it's very unfair and almost unlawful.
Mr. Hirschfield, just in case, you were trying to address item number three, instead of item number two, which was Valco, or you're addressing this one for SB 35?
I'm addressing this for densities in general. I, I think that the density should be consistent with what can be afforded on the properties that we're talking about, any property. And so, my concern generally going forward is that you have to take into account the economics of the situation, and if you don't do it, you're wasting everybody's time. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I value this study session highly. We get to, we get to hear from the public, the public that live in Cupertino. I object to the word streamlined ministerial approval process, it is insulting to me. No one asked me, or the residents of Cupertino, if they liked that wording. To me, it's like Big Brother, nanny, nanny state, you're so stupid, you little Cupertino people, that you haven't been able to make any decisions about your city since 1950, or even in the years of the county. You're so stupid, the state has to take over and make decisions for you. Well, I object, I'm not stupid, and I don't know why Sacramento thinks that Cupertino is stupid. It, it, I, I think that I am gonna say, since we're, since I get my say, streamlined ministerial approval process is insulting to me as a resident, it smacks of socialism. And I, yes, Jamestown had the first, the 400th anniversary today of the first Burgess, I don't know if I say it right, meeting in all of the North American area. I value democracy, and I see democracy taking a big hit in Cupertino, and I find this objectionable. So, please, streamline ministerial approval process, please remove those offensive words, and that is what I'm saying as a resident. SB 35 takes away local control from the city, and the people have no ability to say anything about it. Well, I'm sure saying something now, it is a socialist, paternalistic, insulting, that we are so stupid that we can't even make any decisions about our, our city. Well, who the heck do these people think we are? They want to get rid of the Coastal Commission, they wanna get, they wanna build housing in Santa Cruz where it will fall down in an earthquake on hillsides. I have no confidence in the people that okayed SB 35, and I'm voicing it now. So, if you think that this is going to go quietly through this good night in Cupertino, wrong, wrong, wrong. We're gonna have to have a Boston Tea Party, but first of all, take out this offensive, streamlined ministerial approval process, it makes me feel like I don't live in a democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call on Jim Moore.
Good evening, my name is Jim Moore, and I moved to Cupertino in 1976, raised two children here that went to school, graduated from local schools. I'd like to revisit a few things and be specific as far as the SB 35 project that was proposed for Valco, and I'd like to have people here understand a few things about that project. First of all, Senate Bill 35 requires that the developer satisfy its two-thirds residential square foot eligibility requirement with its pre-bonus density general plan housing unit allowance, which for Valco was 1,779 housing units, okay? Sandhill never submitted a plan, an application for the pre-don, pre-bonus density unit allocation that I just mentioned. Interestingly, the founder of the architectural firm that did Valco, in a May 2019 deposition, said that he didn't do it, but he could have done it if they would have spent the time as far as doing those plans. Now, if you go back to June of 2018, Reed Molds, who was the general manager of Sandhill, had provided numbers that said that, yeah, we did it, and the numbers said two-thirds. I'm a numbers person, and so I did a best-case analysis of what that 1,779... of what that 1,779 unit project would have been as far as square footage. It came out 550,000 square feet less than a two-thirds requirement. I shared that with the city council, I shared that with city staff. There was no rebuttal from anyone from Sandhill, from the architectural firm, on any of the numbers that I presented to them, showing that they were, with that pre-bonus density unit size, that they missed the goal of two-thirds by 550,000 square feet. In my analysis, I also found something interesting, that when you take the numbers, the garage space that is, on average, allocated for each of the BMR units, and let's just look at the one-bedroom size, is greater than the living space in that one-bedroom unit. And one of the things that I suggested in a closed session when I had a chance to present was, I'd recommend that the people that have those BMR rental units, that they actually move into the garage space because it's bigger. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Warren, if you've got comment cards, please submit the blue ones to your left, and please come up to the dice.
Good evening. So I'm, I'm really grateful this discussion is happening. I wish it had happened possibly earlier, but it's happening, so that's good. I'm also frustrated by the recusal of Commissioner Moore. Whether it was the right or wrong thing to do, or for her to be asked to do, I'm assuming she was asked to do that, I don't know. But it's nevertheless frustrating because she's a very valuable asset with a lot of information that could have helped this discussion. And truly, I wish that our former city manager had exercised an abundance of caution before approving the SB 35 VAALCO project application. The approval that he gave was against the wishes and advi, or excuse me, advice of the then-city manager, or city attorney, and others. Yet, Mr. Brant stamped this, the only SB 35 application we have in this city, and very few in the state, right before his chosen exit date. The optics of that, I don't think I have to explain how awful they are. I would say I'm speaking for myself, but I know there's a lot of people saying the same things. But I, it just frustrates me that someone who has valuable information is not able to discuss this when it's so important to our city and, and to our neighboring cities, to the region, to the state, that this be done right. Back when the approval for VAALCO's SB 35, there were already cities making these checklists. I think we're late to the party, but better late than never. And I hope that the discussion is thorough and respectful, and when it moves to city council, I hope for the same thing. And thank you, staff, for doing this, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other comment cards? Are we okay? Okay, let's take it back to the commission.
Well, so I, I just want to comment, I think that whether you like SB 35 or not, the idea of having, having a clear, you know, clear materials upfront and a clear process is valuable. I think that as we have gone through this process in, in many different ways, has helped identify the things which, you know, where do the objective standards exist, and where do they, and where are they, you know, more, you know, somewhat ambiguous? And, and so, you know, I think that it, it's good in that respect to, you know, that, you know, that we're going through this process to identify, you know, try to identify and clarify the process for future applications.
I was gonna say, I think it's really important. We have the ability to streamline projects, improve the speed of that development, while balancing the needs of actually providing input to the public. I think those two things have been very, very important. And, you know, I hope council, if we can note this in the minutes, I hope council understands that this helps us speed the process and streamline it, and also provide the adequate public residential input in there, so. Okay, no other comments, I guess we will.
No, I just have one.
Oh, please.
Actually, it's a question, I guess, for staff, and that is, I'm assuming that we, we did look at what other cities have in terms of their SB 35 application process, and this is somewhat consistent with those in general?
Yes, definitely. We looked specifically at Concord, and Berkeley, at this point, just has an app, draft application form.
Right, since they're kind of in the same boat.
San Francisco has something similar. Of course, they have different local codes that they take into account.
Okay.
There's not that many, there's not that much out there yet.
Right, okay, right.
But there will be.
And just, you don't happen to know if there's any pending litigation against any processes at this time that we're aware of?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I believe we can conclude the study session. Do you guys want to take a bio break? You're good, or you want to go to agenda three?
I'm okay.
Okay. Looks like we're gonna go to item number three, so let's go do that. Chair, you should, I'm sure you called Commissioner Moore. Oh, yeah, let's bring back Commissioner Moore. Let's not leave her out in the dark. Can someone get Commissioner Moore, if she's outside somewhere? Thank you. Let's do this. Let's take a five-minute recess and come back. Let me get set up. All right, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and then we're gonna bring everyone back in here, get Commissioner Moore, get everyone settled, and come on back. If you haven't submitted your cards, please do so. Much appreciated. Blue cards to the left. You have three minutes, and we're gonna take a break. Let's go to agenda number three. Got Commissioner Moore back?
Yes. Regarding item three, I would like to make a brief statement before the Planning Commission proceeds to item three. I am a party in pending litigation, challenging the city's 2018 approval of a project on the site at issue in Agenda Item Three. Based on my involvement in that lawsuit, I am, out of an abundance of caution, and to avoid any potential appearance of impropriety, recusing myself from deliberations and any commission recommendation on Agenda Item Three.
All right, well, Ms. Commissioner Moore, we will bring you back in when we're done. While we're doing that, I'm kind of curious, who here lives in Cupertino? Please raise your hands. I'm very curious. Okay, great. All right, good to know. All right, number three, subject VAALCO Shopping District Special Area General Plan Zoning Amendments.
Chair Wong, can you wait till she leaves the room, please?
Yep, I'll wait till she's officially out. All right, Commissioner Moore has left. VAALCO Shopping District Special Area General Plan Zoning Amendments and Second Addendum to the 2014 General Plan Amendment Housing Element Update and Associated Rezoning Project Environmental Impact Report. All right, why don't we start with the staff?
Yes, we have Eric Phillips here, Special Counsel to the City, to deliver the staff report and answer questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. It's nice to see you again. As was just mentioned, my name's Eric Phillips. I'm from Goldfarb and Littman. I'm Special Land Use Council and Housing Council to the city, and I'll be giving an overview of the items that are here before you this evening. Before we begin talking about the specific items that are the subject of the public hearing and deliberations this evening, I wanted to summarize some of the background and framework for the existing general plan regulations and development standards that are in place for the VAALCO Shopping District Special Area. So this is the, the site, that's the historical site of the VAALCO mall. It's currently designated for office, residential, and commercial uses in the general plan. And the general plan housing element identified the site as what, a priority housing element site. And what that means is that the city identified this site as being a component of the city's ability to meet its regional housing needs allocation, or its, its RENA. When the city identified the site as a priority housing element site, it did so with the idea that it would be developed pursuant to a specific plan. The housing element and the land use element both allocated a development capacity of 35 dwelling units per acre over the, the site. However, the assumption was not that necessarily the entire site would develop at 35 dwelling units per acre. The housing element designated 389 units as a realistic and viable development capacity. HCD then approved the housing element, certified that the 389 unit figure was realistic and would be, as I mentioned, a component of meeting the city's RENA. Also, as I mentioned, the intention was to develop the site pursuant to a specific plan that would more precisely regulate uses and impose development standards beyond the broad, high-level standards that were included in the general plan. And both state law, under the housing element law, and the policies in the housing element itself require the city to adopt zoning, or in this case, a specific plan, to implement and make it possible to develop the housing that's shown in the housing element. And part of what the city did was it devised two options for meeting its RENA. It had this scenario A, which was what I just described, 389 units on the VAALCO site. But then, in the event that a specific plan were not adopted within the three-year timeframe, it said that the city would consider a scenario B, which outlined an alternative methodology for meeting the RENA, which would involve allowing no residential uses on the VAALCO site, and instead upzoning alternative sites that were identified in the housing element to accommodate the RENA. And so as, as you all know, the city did, in fact, adopt a specific plan, but that has since been rescinded. And the city council then considered its options as required by the housing element and land use element to decide how it wanted to proceed with allowing for adequate housing development to be compliant with its housing element and continue to have adequate capacity to meet its RENA. At its June 18th, it says 2018, but it should be 2019, I apologize for that, study session, the city council considered those options and provided specific direction to staff to prepare general plan amendments that would allow the 389 units by right on the VAALCO site that were contemplated in the specific plan. However, it would also remove the office designation, and it would continue to pursue the preparation of a specific plan, with the intention of that specific plan potentially unlocking more of the site for development to allow for housing that goes beyond the 389 units that were accounted for in the housing element. And this sets up basically a two-step planning process. Step one is what's before you here tonight would be the general plan amendments to, right now, allow 389 units by right, with some opportunity to go above that. I'll talk about that briefly. But that would be allowed immediately after these amendments become effective, by right, without additional discretionary action needed by the city. And then as, the second phase of that planning process would be a, a new specific plan that looked at the balance of the site and considered redevelopment opportunities there, with an eye towards creating additional housing opportunities, especially for lower income and other special needs housing here in the city. So that brings us to the public hearing items that are before you this evening. With respect to council's direction here, again, to engage in this two-step process, for step one, we have the general plan amendments and zoning amendments, which would, as I mentioned, remove the office designation from the VAALCO special area, permit residential uses by right in advance of the specific plan, and add some additional residential development standards. I'll go through those in just a moment, but as I mentioned earlier, the general plan, when it was adopted initially, had deferred most of the development standards to the preparation of a specific plan to provide some objective standards in advance of that specific plan being ready. We have some initial residential development standards that can be considered as part of this first-phase planning effort. The zoning amendments would basically be to create a new zoning designation that would implement the housing and commercial development that would be permitted under the general plan. And then finally, before you this evening, there's an addendum to the 2014 General Plan EIR, and I'll talk a little bit more about why that was prepared and what that means in just a moment. But let's focus briefly on the specifics of the amendments that are before you. In the general plan, the, again, keeping in mind the council direction to allow for continued commercial use, create housing opportunities that are consistent with the housing element, but to remove the office allocation, the amendments before you would create two new general plan level land use categories. One that would be for a regional shopping use. It would be consistent with all of the general commercial uses that the city currently allows, and that would be on the majority of the, the VAALCO site. For the, the second new land use category, it would be a regional shopping residential mixed-use category. And the mixing of uses is not required at the applicant's option. It could be residential only, or residential on top of one level of commercial uses. And that would, it's being proposed at a density level that would, again, allow the 389 units immediately developable by right. And that would require, then, a change to the city's citywide development allocation table. This is a table that appears in the land use element of the general plan, that controls how much development is allowed in each of the special areas. The amendments would remove the office allocation from the VAALCO Shopping District, but otherwise keep the commercial, hotel, and residential uses and development allocation unchanged from what's in the general plan today. The other key part of the land use element that would be amended by the changes that are before you tonight is this figure LU2, the community forum diagram. This is the, the city's existing community forum diagram, and it includes development standards for the special areas throughout the city. The packet and the specific resolution that's before you this evening includes specific modifications that would be required to implement the changes that we're talking about. But in general, what it would do is create development standards for the residential development that would be allowed under these changes. It provides that, again, 389 units are available under the development allocation. It keeps the density the same, the 35 dwelling units per acre, but it defines the amount of area that's required to develop the 389 units by right. And then that will be part of the conversation that we have later this evening as well, to get your feedback as to where that designation is the best fit. The development standards would allow for the development of those residential uses, either as ownership or rental uses. And as I mentioned, the 389 units are by right, with a density bonus that would allow actually 526 units without needing additional discretionary approvals or conditional use permit. With a conditional use permit, the development capacity of the site would actually be 459 units without a density bonus, and up to 620 units with a density bonus. So the, the city is, again, creating a framework that would allow at least the 389 units that were shown in the housing element, potentially up to 620 units under certain circumstances. And again, as the first phase of development, with the anticipation that the specific plan would be allowing, looking for opportunities to increase residential capacity beyond this. The other key residential development standards that would be added would be height standards for, both for residential only, or an increased height if the property owner chose to do residential over commercial development, and setback requirements. And we felt that these were the minimum development standards that the general plan should include to ensure that the height, mass, bulk, and density of development that would happen would be consistent with the community's vision for this area. Similarly, for the non-residential development standards that would be added, again, the allocations for commercial and hotel don't change, though the amendments would add a height limitation for commercial height limitation for commercial development and clarify that the setback requirement applies as well. The last part of the general plan that would be affected by these changes is goal LU nineteen. This is a section of the general plan that includes the city's specific policies for future development of the Valco property. There's specific text amendments that are included in the packet, I'm not going to go through all of them. Many of them are just basically to carry forward those types of changes that I just summarized into the policy text that's Valco-specific. However, it would also provide additional guidance for what the specific plan would look like that would govern future development once that was adopted. And then, the other component that this goal LU nineteen would need to have is some direction as to where the thirteen point one acres would go. So this is an aerial of the existing site with the parcelization, the parcel lines overlaid on the buildings and the site. And to the right of the aerial, you'll see three shapes that are approximately thirteen point one acres. They give you a rough sense of the scale about how much of the site would be allocated for this housing or housing and mixed use. And then, part of the direction in your motion tonight will be to decide where on the site is most appropriate for this residential-focused mixed-use development. And some factors you may wish to consider would be whether you want to promote more commercial activity and mixed use, have that be near a busier intersection. If it was a more residential focus, it could be on a part of the site that was further from the major streets, but that's, will be part of the subject of your deliberations this evening. So I expect we'll return to this as you continue to deliberate that tonight. The zoning amendments that are approved, or that are proposed for you to review tonight, again, just are primarily focused on implementing the general plan changes. There are some old, or at this point outdated, references to the Valco Town Center specific plan that would be removed from the zoning code. But the primary focus would be to create a new mixed-use designation that could be used for the residential and mixed-use thirteen point one acres portion of the site. The balance of the site, then, would be rezoned to permit general commercial uses. And this would, again, allow for immediate development of residential, continued commercial uses that are permitted, and leave the stage set for additional planning work by way of that specific plan that I've mentioned a few times now. And then, the last thing I'm going to touch on before I complete my overview for you tonight is the environmental analysis. To comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, the city has prepared an addendum to a previously certified EIR. When the city adopted the general plan zoning and housing element originally, it analyzed the environmental effects and any potential significant impacts of that development. The addendum has been prepared to analyze the effects of these specific changes and whether or not these changes that are being contemplated would create new or more severe significant effects than had been previously analyzed and disclosed. And the addendum that's been prepared concludes that the changes would not lead to more significant impacts, as you can see from the full document that's included in the packet. Because the office use is being removed, the overall development capacity of the site is somewhat reduced, so the environmental effects would be either the same or superior in the way that SEQA looks at them, they would be less severe environmental impacts. Therefore, the addendum creates a record that shows that no subsequent environmental review is required to comply with SEQA. So that leaves us, then, with just our recommended actions. There are a series of resolutions that are here for you to consider this evening. The first would be a resolution to recommend to council that they adopt the general plan amendment that would remove the office allocations and adopt the second addendum. The second would be a resolution to recommend approval of the bulk of the general plan changes to implement the two new land use designations that I described. And here, this is where we would also look to have your motion include a recommendation on where the land uses are appropriate, which thirteen point one acres should be designated for that new regional shopping and residential land use. Action three would be the zoning text changes, a recommendation of the, to the council to adopt an ordinance that would create the new zoning designation that I described, as well as make conforming text edits. And action four would be a resolution recommending council adopt an ordinance changing the zoning map itself, again, consistent with the suite of recommendations beyond that. So that's the summary of the items that are before you. We're happy to answer any questions, and we'll be here at your disposal.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Commissioners, anybody want to start?
I want to get some background on why we chose thirteen point one acres and where does it come from, and how does it relate to the total property size? It's about sixty acres, in fact, sixty-two acres.
Yes, so...
So, like, where does the thirteen come from? And why is, why are we going down on, focusing on that number?
Sure. So the thirteen point one acre figure is derived from the amount of land that is necessary to accommodate the housing at the density that's being assumed. It's a little convoluted, but the housing element assumes basically an eighty-five percent yield or development efficiency. So when the city reported to HCD that it would anticipate three hundred eighty-nine units be developed within the Valco area, that three hundred eighty-nine figure was actually eighty-five percent of what they thought the zoning would allow for at that time. That is a traditional figure that the state looks to, to assume what they call a realistic development capacity for the site. So thirteen point one acres at thirty-five dwelling units an acre actually creates a development capacity of four hundred fifty-nine units. Eighty-five percent of that four hundred fifty-nine is the three hundred eighty-nine units. So the thirteen point one is designed to make sure that we get at least the three hundred eighty-nine units that the housing element says are feasible.
And the density bonuses and everything is above that?
That's, that's correct. So, as I mentioned, the three hundred eighty-nine units are, if this is approved, would be allowed by right. A density bonus could be approved on top of that, which would allow for five hundred twenty-six units at the maximum. With a CUP, the actual site capacity could go up to four hundred fifty-nine units without a density bonus, or six hundred and twenty units with a density bonus.
And with six hundred and twenty units, what would be the, the density per acre? Like?
I didn't calculate that, but I'll tell you in one second.
Around forty-five, yes?
Probably about...
Good math. Good math.
Yeah, about forty-seven and change.
Thirty-five percent higher than thirty-five.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that's, that's a faster way to do it. But yeah, so the density bonus is a thirty-five percent. If you're providing the maximum amount of affordability under the state regulations to qualify for density bonus, you're eligible for a thirty-five percent increase over the otherwise allowable maximum. So it would be thirty-five percent above thirty-five, and that, yeah, does put us right in that forty-seven range.
And, just one, just to help me imagine, like, suppose we have an area zoned for single-family at, say, five thousand square foot. That is about, what, how many lots per acre, like?
Six.
Six. Okay, so, and we're talking around forty-eight. So it would be like about eight times the density of a single-family neighborhood. Okay, thanks.
Couple real quick questions. One is, the three thirty-nine include the Hyatt House, correct? Existing rooms at the Hyatt House?
For the hotel...
For the hotel rooms.
Yes, that's correct.
How many rooms are in the Hyatt House, if I may remember?
That, I'm not sure. We'll ask, staff will check, and we'll get that information for you.
So it's three thirty-nine minus whatever that number is, is the size of the hotel that'll be allowed?
I believe a hundred and forty-eight, hundred and fifty-eight rooms.
Okay. So, hotel of similar size, then, it would be allowed?
Correct.
And I assume that the three eighty-nine was, was derived simply because that was what was in the plan originally? Is that the...
That, that's correct. So the, the housing element calls for at least three hundred eighty-nine units on the site. So in order to, for these changes to be consistent with the housing element...
Right.
We have to make sure that we preserve that.
Remind me what year that number was established, as far as that site?
So the housing element was finally approved in two thousand fifteen.
Right. So I think the environment has somewhat changed since then from the standpoint of compression of housing and need for housing. So I guess why not allocate a larger number as the minimum associated with this site?
Sure. And I, my understanding of council direction is that they feel that the larger number, the site could accommodate more housing and that there is that increased demand for it, and that the, creating the framework to accommodate that larger number should be done with a larger planning process and through the, the full specific plan that was originally contemplated. So the direction to staff and, and the work plan reflects this as a step one, and then a specific plan to implement what you were just asking about as, as the next step in the work plan.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, just for the record, there is an approved SB thirty-five application in force right now.
That's correct.
All right. So can I ask, for clarification on why we're considering this resolution?
Sure. So this would not affect the approved SB thirty-five project. The intent here is to create development standards that would govern the site if that project doesn't develop.
And, and so that could be done at that time as well?
Yes.
All right. And then, no, if you want to ask something, you can. I'll spool up my neck set.
You're spooling up your neck set, all right, cool. We've got three engineers up here. All right, we'll let you queue up. I got a couple questions for staff. One, is a lot of this effort to clean up inconsistencies with the GP and what we have today, says what's going on with this process? Any inconsistencies with the general plan and kind of amendments that are out there?
I wouldn't necessarily say that they're inconsistencies. I'd say that it's adding a level of specificity to the general plan.
Okay, so we're being more precise with this?
Yes.
Okay. And two, is this a return to the original designation of the general plan before the specific plan was in place? Are we close to that level in terms of what we're trying to achieve here in terms of the amount of housing?
A, a return...
To what it was before we had any specific plans in place? Are we going back to what the original general plan had?
Well, the, I guess it's hard to say what the original general plan is. So the two thousand fifteen general plan that's in place right now allows for a mix of office, commercial, and residential, and these amendments would remove the office designation, but continue to allow residential and commercial development consistent with the two thousand fifteen general plan. Prior to the two thousand fifteen general plan, office was not allowed at the site. So this is consistent with the, the pre-two thousand fifteen designation.
Okay, so we're consistent with the pre-two thousand fifteen designation. And then, I have a third question here.
Actually, can I ask a question related to that?
Sure.
In the two thousand five general plan, the land use is identified as mixed use, including office. There just was no specific office allocation to that zone...
No allocation.
...because the Valco shopping district was not a separate zone, special planning area at that time. So that, actually, office, I believe that it would be correct to say that office uses were permitted in two thousand five, and I believe it's actually true in nineteen eighty-nine as well, in nineteen eighty-NGPA.
Okay, yeah, we'll double-check to make sure that that answer is more precise. Thanks for that clarification.
But going back to the two thousand fifteen plan, there was no office designation, correct?
Well, in two thousand fifteen, there was an office. That's when it was amended to specifically include two million square feet of office and the, and the designation.
And that was put into the allocation, right, at that point?
That was, the allocation table was, was added at that point.
In terms of timing, when the current holder of the property purchased the plan, was there any allocation for office available for them to use?
I don't know that we have that information right here for you tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna ask one more.
Actually, I want to, I want to come back to that.
Sure.
In two thousand twelve, for instance, I believe the allocate, you know, this is something that's worth checking up on. I believe the land, the land designation was including office, you know, full mixed use on the South Valco planning area, which includes the shopping center. So, so I think that that was permitted, it just, there was no zoning, because the zoning would only have been conformed had the shopping center went away, and there was no allocation outside of, you know, I think that you could have, I believe by the policy of the city, you could have asked for money from the major developer pool, which was also in existence prior to the twenty, you know, twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen GPA, and you would have been able to build office there.
Okay. So the way things stood the day or around the time where the property was purchased, there was no existing allocation available? Would that be, would be right?
I don't know, I'll defer to staff, because...
Yeah, that's correct. Well, there was, there was nothing allocated to the site, however, there were pools, you know, the, the major developer pool was, did have allocation at that time.
Right, so, you know, that...
I think we've got a lot of information the staff can look up and clarify here.
But I think that it's an incorrect conclusion, so that, that office was not a permitted use in two thousand six. In fact, you know, in fact, there was actually a, there was an approval.
Pre-two thousand fourteen, though, there was no housing, right, on that site? Is that correct? I believe that was the case when I went back. There was no housing pre-two thousand fourteen? The GP, no housing?
The land use, in the two thousand five GP includes housing. The, there was a referendum, and that was approved in two thousand five, and that was removed, reversed in two thousand six. But what was reversed was the zoning, not the land use.
Okay. Have you gotten across your point that you want for this line of questioning?
I think, I think so. I think we, we may differ, we may differ on the technicality here, but that's something that, that's worth carrying forward.
Actually, more pertinent to this, I would ask a question is, if this plan was approved, would that allow a developer to build right away the three hundred eighty-nine units if they wanted to?
Yes, those, those would be permitted by right.
And they don't have to go through anything else? It's just in the general plan, so only follow it? They won't have to submit a specific plan?
Correct, no specific plan.
So they could, they could build right away, three hundred eighty-nine units?
Yes.
No, it's not three eighty-nine, it's more, right?
Well, it's more with the BMR bonus if they decided to do that. They have the opportunity to build the residential housing now, today, if we did this.
Yes.
Well, except that there's a existing SB thirty-five plan.
They may choose not to.
They can choose either one. They can go SB thirty-five, or they can go build homes right away and get affordable housing and play, right? It's their choice. Ultimately, it's their choice, right? But they can do that right away if this plans. Second question is, can they build even more with a density bonus beyond the three eighty-nine? What's the max they can build housing right away on?
Yeah, so the, there's, again, the three hundred eighty-nine is by right with a density bonus that goes up to five hundred and twenty-six units. With a conditional use permit, which is a discretionary action, it would come back to this body, that can go up to four hundred fifty-nine units. With a density bonus, the max capacity is six hundred and twenty units.
So when they use their demo permit to build, to take down that second garage, they could build right away more than six hundred units of housing on day one, without even having to invoke SB thirty-five, is that correct?
Well, to get over six hundred units, it would require a conditional use permit.
Okay, we could issue that conditional use permit, is that correct?
That would be within the discretion of the city.
And it would require an approval of a proposal as well.
Yeah.
Well, they'd have to submit a proposal, but they could do this right away, right? We could have housing right away. That's amazing.
So, I'd like to just make some comments with regard to, I mean, I appreciate your enthusiasm to establish housing right away, but I think you have to look at the big picture in terms of the whole project. We're talking about, at this point in time, thirteen acres of fifty-five acres, which leaves about forty-two acres of, I think, what, what is being proposed is retail, if you will.
I think there are two proposals, right? One is for residential only, one is for residential and retail, is that correct?
Well, the, I mean, the way that...
Resolution is listed, yeah.
...is correct, that thirteen acres of the site would allow for the mixed use, the bulk of the site would be for the general commercial use.
General commercial only, right. So I think we really need to assess the viability of forty-two acres of commercial only, because, you know, that, that much retail floor space, you really have to question the viability of that associated with making the development feasible as a whole. So advocating more acreage for housing seems to me would be a, a better utilization of that space. So, again, I think in our discussions, I think we, we, we need... So, again, I think in our discussions, I think we, we, we need to discuss that utilization and, and really look at the, the whole...
Commissioner Takahashi, you're, you're saying that we have an opportunity to build more housing here instead of retail or office space. There's an opportunity to do so.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, right. And we should take a look at this and get the best use in here. We have an affordable housing and a housing issue, and that's what you're suggesting is maybe we should take a look at the project in whole.
Yeah, I, I think we should take a look at the project in whole, but I don't think, I think removing office space in whole is something we should revisit. I've never supported the 2 million square feet. I always thought it was, it was, it was too much office space. But I always felt like there was a good compromise between the three elements associated with that piece of land. And it's, it's, it's kind of sad that we've come to this point where you've got an incredibly divided community that is either for the project or bitterly against the project and has no trust in the other side and, and really not being able to work together as a community as a whole and reach a conclusion to this project that A, meets the needs of the community and B, at least has the developer not taking a bath on this project.
Yeah, we have to make sure the developer's economic viable.
Right, exactly. So, I, so I think there's, there's a blend. And I think based on events and the dynamics of the housing market over the past three years, a shift towards some of, a, a good chunk of that office towards housing and some level of retail space that can be sustained. I mean, if, if, if the demand is that there's 42 acres of retail space, I think you're gonna create another ghost town. And that just isn't gonna work for anybody, right? So, so there's, the, the, the dynamics of something that works has definitely changed. And I think we should take a step back and, and really assess what, what is a solution that, that works as opposed to, what this feels like to me just is the same, I mean, in, in terms of one side feeling that the project as a whole was rushed through, right? That, that, I kind of get the same feeling that the other side is trying to do the same thing at this point in time. Rush, rush a, let, take all the office away, 13 acres of, right? Why, why not try to, at least try one more time to, to reach a, a good compromise that, that both sides of this element can, can see as an acceptable solution?
Yeah, it takes two to tango.
Right.
It takes two to tango. I would welcome the opportunity to speak with the developers on this and if they wanted to build more housing and find a great mix and make sure it's economically viable.
Yeah, I don't know, but, but the language and the, and, and the attitudes don't necessarily seem to support that. At least that's, that's the perception.
I think the history behind it has been so vicious that both sides have taken into taking strong positions from a negotiating perspective.
Exactly, exactly.
I don't know if it's been communicated to the developers that there is a essence of compromise that's available to them instead of fighting so hard.
Right, except the actions that we're discussing right now are exactly in that vein of no compromise, right?
Well, I think if your interest is in building homes, then this, this plan specifically is minimizing the number of homes built. To the very least, that can be, that we're compliant with what was approved before. It's the very least to not be in violation of the HAA law. We can do better than that.
Taking Commissioner's, sorry, taking Commissioner's funk's point to staff, we can build up to 680 homes at this point, but we could also build more at a later point. It doesn't prevent us from doing that, this resolution, right? It doesn't take away that option.
It, it does, actually, because...
Well, I'm waiting for staff to answer, but we'll get your opinion as well.
But it's probably actually up for the, the commission to deliberate in the intention and the, the work plan and direction is to then come back and prepare a specific plan to look at additional development uses on the site.
But the action that's being, that's before us today would make that space retail only. So, that would not be able to be...
But maybe the action today would give us...
Without a change in the GPA, right?
Yeah. But maybe the action today would give us an opportunity to go back and have that conversation with the developer to say, let's reset, let's see where we are.
Yeah, I think the, the fact that 80% of the land would still be under a specific plan which the developer comes up with or open to that doesn't preclude any of the things which Alan Yu talked about.
But it doesn't approve any of those things either?
Well, we can't approve anything when all we have right now are lawsuits, Measure D, and all kind of things. So, like, where was the compromise or where was the proposal to sit and talk?
I extend a conciliatory approach to the developers if they want to do something on this. I really think it's an opportunity.
Well, there was, there was an extensive specific plan process last year. If you choose, if you chose not to participate, you know, there's really, there's really not much that could be said there.
It was a different council and a different commission.
So, I, I don't believe that this is an appropriate way to start if you want to try to have...
Commissioner Funk, the reality is, we had a council, we had a thing, we had a huge referendum, and that's where we are now. So, people had questions about the 2 million allocation right from, like, the day, the night it happened, okay? And, like, a lot of us are here simply because they didn't feel comfortable with that process, the transparency and what it was resulting in. I think if we are gonna leave 80% of the whole property open to a specific plan, which the developer can come up with, I don't think that by itself is precluding anything we have talked about, whether it's office, more housing, or anything else. So, that's, that's the way I would say that.
Yeah, I think we probably need clarity on that just from the standpoint of if this were to move forward as written and that, that balance, that 42 acres is designated as commercial, can a specific plan come in without a general plan amendment and add housing and office and be, be a, a mixed use of, of three elements, including more hotel space, for example?
So, the, the short answer is, is no. To implement that change and even the, the future vision that the council has outlaid would require then a second general plan amendment to authorize those uses as well.
So, you really, to do what, you know, Commissioner Saxton, to do what you want to say, you really not, you need not to approve the limiting action on the 42 acres?
I, I think we have a unique opportunity to build more housing here, and, and I think it's interesting to see, so. Any other questions from the commissioners about this resolution or these four resolutions?
I have the...
Probably, there's a lot of public comment, so...
Let's get to the public comment. I'll keep you guys waiting. So, I think that's what you guys are all here.
Actually, so let me ask, one of the things that's unusual in this, in this, in this packet is the discussion around allocation of where the residential parcel would be that appears to be just completely up to the planning commission here to make a recommendation. So, I don't know that we ought to discuss that first before, so the public has an opportunity to comment on that.
That one strikes me as kind of a strange element of, of this meeting just because, I think, again, looking at the bigger picture, by, by going through that process, you're somewhat acknowledging that, yes, there's 13 acres that is going to be housing and it's gonna be right here. While we probably each have opinions as to where that might be, are we really the best authority to determine where that should be, given traffic patterns and everything else that goes with that? Seems to me that element is, is, I don't feel that I'm in a position to, to have a strong opinion of that, I guess you could say.
And I would, I would also say that although there's an implication of a singular 13.1 acres, that actually is not a requirement.
It could be broken up.
Right. But the, one of the challenges is that I believe that the additional space is, will be undevelopable under this, under this plan. So, coming up with roads, coming up with a traffic, you know, a traffic system, probably not possible.
Any other comments from the commissioners before we open up to the public?
Well, so, so I, do, do we, is there an intention then to take public comment and then...
To blow red from there?
And, well, so one of the problems that will hap, one of the things that will occur is that if we do that, if somebody doesn't like the location, they will not have an opportunity to comment. And I think that that's probably not appropriate, given that's the most, the biggest thing here.
You're gonna choose a location right now?
I think we got to have a discussion.
I guess, should we have a broader discussion on, do we all feel like it's appropriate for us to, to determine a location? So, my vote on that is actually no. I don't think it is, but I'd like to know where the other commissioners stand on that.
I think we can make a proposal on a recommendation. Council ultimately makes the decision to give them an idea of what we think. So, that's an option. You can also vote no.
Right, but, I mean...
Well, so, and I would concur. I think we have, I, I think we have insufficient information. There's a, so one basic part of the package here is, is that there is a proposal, staff has advanced a proposal that says that we could accept that no EIR would be required. I think that that's not true. And, and we need to talk about that as well. But that, I believe ties indirectly with that. If you want to make a recommendation about the position of where you want to put, you know, the residential space, there are going to be, there are gonna be impacts, traffic impacts. There has been a lot of contention about toxic issues on this site. I think that that, you know, well, I mean, I'll, I'll go ahead and say it now. If you, if you look at the layout of Valco, this is a, this package of resolutions would allow you to build homes by right unless, unless all the members of planning commission are willing to stipulate that there are no issues with toxics or contamination on the site, then I think that would severely limit where you could place those homes.
Well, I believe, I think the process that we're supposed to take here is we ask questions of staff at this point, and then we leave deliberation to the other point. And I really do want to open it up to public comment. So, is there any objections to opening up the public comment?
If you want to do that, it's fine.
Let's do that. So, I don't want to make everyone here wait. I know you guys have been waiting. It's late, it's almost nine, and many of you want to see your families and kids, so let's jump in. I want to give the question, first comment to the honor of being here, it's our former chair of the Planning Commission, Jeff Paulson. Please come on up. Thank you for being here.
Commissioners, as your chair said, I'm Jeff Paulson, former chair, and I want to make a couple of, of general comments. First, I want to show you a couple of visual aids, but they're imaginary visual aids. I want you to imagine the big number 200 spread out above me. 200 is the number of meetings that we learned in public administration grad school is often necessary when you make a big change. This is a big change at a very hotly contested site. So, I think to just have a hearing and a recommendation and a council decision would be ill-advised. Second visual aid is a great big dollar sign, okay? Imagine a big dollar sign above my head. But the dollar sign is red because it's gonna represent red ink for the developer and it's gonna put the city at a possible financial risk because developers have sued for a zoning decision that has reduced the value of their property. So, we place ourselves as a city at considerable financial risk with this recommendation. Now, I want to talk generally about where we're going. And this is based on a discussion I had with one of you who called me last night. And we talked about Cupertino being an innovative city, being a brilliant city, having brilliant children who are gonna be leaders of the future. And in order to do that, we have to look forward. You know, my family's been here since the 1630s, been in this valley since 1914. We've participated in a lot of changes, helped fight for democracy against slavery, fight for Medicare, and we need to change with the times. We can't go back. We're too bright a city for that. We can't say, I miss Kmart, I miss what Valco was. We can't go there because Amazon and other online retailers have changed that. The city is changing. I welcome the change. I welcome the diversity. I welcome the diversity of cultures, of opinions. But as a city, we can't sit here and just say we don't want anything to change. We need to change. We're too smart to say no to change. Carl Guardina was here last year, and he quoted from his faith tradition, which said, where there's no vision, the people perish. And as planning commissioners, you need to make a visionary recommendation to the council. Not one based on fear of the future, not based on one looking backward, but one based on innovation and creativity and something that will make Cupertino a landmark. So, again, to repeat, we cannot go back. We cannot go back. We must go forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, former Chair Paulson. Okay, next on our agenda, Reed Molds.
My name is Reed Molds. I'm managing director with Sand Hill Property Company. I am the project executive for Valco Town Center. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'll try to get my comments in within three minutes that I'm allowed here. I did send a letter into you yesterday. Hope you had a chance to approve, review it. This is, there are a lot of details in the letter. I won't go into all of them here in my time, but I just wanted to leave with you some thoughts that, that we had in this situation. First of all, before I get started, I just wanted to communicate our strong commitment to our Valco Town Center project. This is the SB 35 project that has come up in numerous instances tonight. We're very excited not only to build that project, but very proud of the achievement of coming up with a viable development program that addresses this city's greatest need, which is affordable housing. And we're very much looking forward to bringing that project forward here as soon as we have resolution of some of the pending legal issues. And, you know, that needs to be addressed as well. And I'm, obviously, Commissioner Kitty Moore, who brought a lawsuit against the city with, along with Better Cupertino, is not here to have this discussion, but in, in our opinion at this point, we are just going to advocate for sound planning principles until such time as we have the ability to move forward with our project. And there's always uncertainty in litigation, and until that outcome is 100% clear to us, we're gonna continue to advocate to redevelop and revitalize Valco. And that's why we're here tonight. The primary message that I would like to deliver to you is that the development program in front of you, the land use designations that you're considering are completely infeasible. When you make a land use decision, when you make a policy decision to have infeasible development, you will not see that built. You did not take the time to engage an economic consultant to advise you. Chair Wang, you said tonight that you need to make sure that this project, this, this, this general plan is economically viable. 100% true, you do. Because if it's not, then it won't be built. You say you want housing. The fastest way you can get housing is to prevail upon your fellow commissioner to drop her lawsuit and allow us to move forward with our SB 35 project. That project is approved. It's fully designed. It'll bring 2,402 units, which seem to be a priority to you, and half of those are affordable. So, I think if we want to achieve your goals, that's the way to do it. That's the fastest way to do it and not talk about an inviable project because that is what this is. In fact, just using some of the assumptions that came from your consultant last year through the specific plan process, you would see that, that the decision you're about to make would result in basically a $500 million loss for us if we were to proceed with that project. Obviously, it's not feasible for us, it's not feasible for any developer. So, it won't happen. If you would allow me to continue, I...
I'll give you 30 more seconds if you want.
Well, I would ask for a little bit more time as the property owner. I wasn't given the accommodation of actually speaking on this item as the, as the real prop, the real party in interest here. So, if you give me a few more...
We're gonna be equitable to everybody, so, I mean, if you want to put another representative up to ask, or you have time, we can do that as well.
All right. Well, what I'm saying here is, you move forward, it's a hazardous proposition because this is infeasible, and it's especially sad when it's in such bad faith. Right now, there is no tier, so-called tier two. It's tier one and done. You have no intention of proceeding with tier two, and that's, that's really horrific when you're looking at the impacts this will cause on the affordable housing crisis that's going on here right now in Cupertino. So, I would ask you, do not take this action, do not forward it to, to the, to the city council. We can go through the housing stats, you, you've seen them, you should know them. You'll have, you'll have 45 BMR units left in the city in 10 years at your current pace. You've only produced 88 in the last 12. That's the wrong direction. And I would just ask that we work, that you, look, if your two priorities are for housing...
So, I've, I've gotta have other people come up, but I would love to have a conversation with you in the future. This is the first time we've met in six months, and I think that would be important if we actually sat down at some point.
Well, I recommend you seize and desist. Thank you.
Kevin McCallen, please.
My name is Kevin McCallen, and I started working at Valco in 1984 for TGI Fridays there. And while I only worked there for 23 years, I still am a part of the business community here in Cupertino today, as most of you know. I've always felt that the planning commission and the city council... I've always felt that the Planning Commission and the City Council are the gatekeepers for our future and that the vision and the decisions that are made help us and help the future because we're just kind of passing through, but the next generation's going to be the ones that evaluate whether we made good decisions or bad for them. And the tough part is we are already seeing some difficulties today. Teachers that are in our... That teach in our community can't afford to live in our community. Seniors that live in our community have no place to downsize, and their houses, and remain in their houses, and those houses aren't turning over for new families to come in for that next generation. Kids that grew up in these great school systems can't afford to come back and live here, and people that work here can't live here as well, and we all see that traffic is getting worse. The hope would be that at some point in the near future, through decisions made by the City Council, the Planning Commission, that we get to a place where our teachers can be a part of the community and live here, that our seniors have a place to downsize, that their children can live here as well, and that people that want to live in the community have some opportunity to do that. So, I would ask that you vote against this tonight and in the future that we find a way to move forward with a better future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
You know, there are people who actually are at home watching our City Council and Planning Commission meetings, and they enjoy it. We're going to win the nighttime or daytime Grammys. I enjoy it. This is a lot of fun, okay? You know, with all the stuff that's going on federally and it's Sacramento, it is really refreshing to be able to come to my city, my Planning Commission, my City Council, my building, and talk about things that are bothering me, upsetting me. You know I talk about 17 all the time. I was on it today, up and down, car accidents, et cetera. Nobody can seem to... You know, we've heard about Valco since day one. Nobody can fix 17. Won't go there. The mayor's told me he doesn't want me to talk about it. Okay, when I first moved to Cupertino, we had a mall. We got to shop in our mall. I shopped at the mall. I always shopped at Valco. Now, we've lost our mall, and all the people from the 3 million, billion, trillion people that people want to stuff in at Valco are going to be going to my high school. I went to Homestead, but Cupertino High School is in Rancho Rincana, and it is the place where all these zillion, billion, million kids are supposed to be going. Well, how does that make me feel? Let's assign them to Monavista, okay? Not to pick on Monavista. Let's assign them to Homestead. How about Fremont High School? Let's share all the drama and intrigue of all the million, billion, zillion people that Valco will hold and have them go to every high school in the Fremont Unified area. There are, I think there's four or five high schools. Let's spread the pain. Yes, it is pain. It is resources that are overloaded. We have IHOP and Second Blue Tower. The cruise ship is being built in my neighborhood. We have the 10-story Stern Hotel being built in my neighborhood. Why the heck should the neighbors in Rancho Rincana want another 3 billion, zillion high school students from Valco to go to their high school? We're across Stevens Creek Boulevard. Those kids are going to have to walk across Stevens Creek Boulevard unless we build them a bike bridge. But yeah, let's start having some pushback. The neighborhood is not happy. We're already getting a bunch of West San Jose kids from that port... I don't know. It's the people that are trying to destroy Meridian Quad down at the other end of West San Jose, and we know that El Paso is going to become an SB 35 project. The writing is on the wall. They already have 800 housing units and 10 stories, and the Cato property is right next to a 30-foot antenna at the back of the church. So, how can you tell me that Valco is not going to wind up being daytime and nighttime soap opera for TV land? But I don't want those 3 million kids to be going to my high school. We don't want... You know, we have enough problems in my neighborhood. Let's let them go to Sunnyvale or Monavista or Fremont. Thank you.
Thank you. We're out of time. I've been asked to make sure that we don't clap or intimidate other folks here, so if you can hold any applause or anything clapping or cheering or booing, just to make sure everyone feels it's a safe, inclusive space. Josh Sello, hopefully I pronounced this correctly.
Thank you very much. My name is Josh Sello. I'm the Executive Director of West Valley Community Services, our community social service agency. I'm actually not going to talk about affordable housing, not right away. What I want to talk about is economically diverse communities. Like a lot of people in this room, I eat out. Occasionally, I get a haircut. I like to go to movies or visit a bookstore. Now, most of the people who work those jobs, restaurants, hair salons, movie theaters, they aren't making six figures. They're making minimum wage, maybe a bit more, but far less than what a person needs to be self-sufficient in Cupertino and Silicon Valley. In fact, according to the Silicon Valley Index, a third of the people in our region don't make enough money to cover their basic needs to be self-sufficient. Wages are too low, rent is too high, and there isn't enough affordable housing. Here in Cupertino, the city's affordable housing stock hasn't significantly changed in about 11 years, as we've already heard. That was the problem Evelyn was facing when she came to West Valley Community Services. She was homeless and living in her car with her two children for five months because she could not afford to live here. She had a full-time job, but that wasn't enough. In fact, as a single mother with two children, she would need to earn $65 an hour to cover her basic needs, her food, her rent, her transportation. And working in the service industry, an industry we all depend on, this community depends on... Well, her wages didn't cut it. We want, we need economically diverse communities, but without sufficient affordable housing, that just isn't possible. As a result, the quality in our communities, the quality of life, will continue to suffer, and that's what you see happening throughout our region. Between 2017 and 2019, homelessness in Santa Clara County increased by 31%, and homelessness in Cupertino increased by 25%. According to the Mercury News, rents are on the rise again, and households need to earn 10 times the median income to buy an average home. Downzoning the Valco site would drastically reduce the number of affordable housing units that can be built there drastically. And if, as Commissioner Takahashi said, you completely eliminate office space, that could kill any development there at all. This city has the opportunity to make a meaningful impact on the affordable housing crisis and take a stand in support of economically diverse communities. I ask you to think about Evelyn, her kids, and the almost 4,000 people that come to us every single year for help. Don't we owe it to our neighbors and our community to ensure that we are maximizing housing opportunities, ensuring Cupertino remains economically diverse and a community that we all can be proud of? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you again tonight. As a Cupertino resident since 1976, I want to thank the new Planning Commission, the city staff, the manager, the attorneys, and the new City Council for doing a thorough research on the Valco issue and doing what I consider to be a good amount of community outreach and also, which is most important to me, doing an evidence-based analysis rather than just an emotional or opinion-based analysis as far as reaching the four draft resolutions that you're discussing and considering tonight. I personally, along with my immediate neighbors for sure and probably most of my neighborhood likely, we support the four draft resolutions, and yet, we're about three miles from Valco, so we don't have the impacts that other people that live much closer are going to experience if this isn't done, if we don't make some changes. Cupertino residents, as we know, defeated Measure D, the hills at Valco. They signed and qualified the referendum, which led to the Valco-specific plan being removed as far as from being considered for construction. They... We also, as far as residents, opposed the legal ministerial approval of the SB 35 project, and that's the lawsuit that's moving forward, and we're very willing to let the court make that decision with all the facts. Again, we've expressed very strong disapproval from the very beginning, starting in 2014, to a 2 million square foot allocation of office at Valco. That's a development which would make our traffic gridlock much worse. I think we all agree to that, and it would also, and maybe some people haven't looked at the numbers, but they need to, it would also make our jobs-to-housing balance much worse. And we can't afford to dig a hole deeper as far as housing, okay? We need affordable housing. We need more housing, but if we add many more jobs than even the housing that we add can accommodate, we've dug the hole deeper as far as our housing imbalance, and that's not the way to go. So, again, thank you.
Jim, thank you. We're out of time.
Actually, I have a question. Could you come back, please?
Jim, you can come back. Commissioner Fung has a question for you.
Yes.
You made reference to the... These resolutions being driven by an evidence-based study. I was curious what you... What would you cite as the... An example of that?
All the City Council meetings, all the closed sessions, and I've had the opportunity to present to many of those. I've done a lot of numerical analysis and shared that with the City Council. I've heard other people share a lot of that analysis. It's numbers-based. It's based on observations. It's based on what's taking place in our valley. I've had some very long discussions with some neighbors that are, in my opinion, much more informed about doing analysis than I am at this point in time. I've been retired for 20-some years. They're very familiar with the new technology and with doing things today with social media as far as understanding what's happening. But what I've seen, as far as what's been documented, I believe that there's been a lot of evidence-based analysis. I look at the 153-page packet for this particular meeting, which I've printed and read through some multiple times. That's evidence-based to me.
Jim, we're good. Thank you. Adam Bookbinder.
Bookbinder.
Bookbinder. Adam Bookbinder, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioners. Pardon me. I'm bringing some notes here. I am a former resident of Cupertino. I can no longer raise my hand when you ask who is from here. I was forced out by rising rents. I moved another 10 minutes down 280. I am, again, being forced to move by rising rents. This is very real for me. I want to mention that I was somewhat intimidated to come here. I'm worried to advocate for housing. I am a public official in the city where I live now. There is no way that the sort of behavior that the Chair has engaged in would ever fly where I came from. I would absolutely have been forced to resign, or I would have done it myself out of a sense of moral obligation. I am shocked that that has not happened here. Onto the present topic. I don't believe this is fooling anyone. This is clearly a pie-in-the-sky proposal that has no chance of resulting in any actual housing being built. We've heard from the developer that if you're hungry for housing being built, there's a plan where that will happen. If you mandate this, housing will not be built. You may... The council may feel that it's done the right thing, but the result will not be an extra 1,201 units of affordable housing. It will be none. This is being done in the hopes that the court challenge will destroy the existing plan and to throw some dirt over the possibility that we'll ever actually go forth. If you want more housing to be able to be built tomorrow, you could amend the zoning map. You could enable duplexes citywide tomorrow. You could enable quadplexes citywide tomorrow. If you want to permit more housing, you can. There is a perfectly good plan here, and let's be honest, this is an attempt to destroy that plan. I urge the Commission to vote no on this, to preserve the plan, to do what you can, to put aside the legal challenge to the current development at Valco and allow the housing to proceed. It's incredibly needed, and this has gone on for years and years. This is... Everything that's going on here is obviously in contravention of the spirit, if not the letter, of SB 35, and I would be shocked if it does not open up the city to a lot of liability to try and constantly drag their heels and backtrack on this. There is a way forward, and the city needs to take it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You know, I have a question for you.
Please come back. Please come back.
You know, like, I also feel that, you know, housing's a problem. I'm pretty old, but like, I've been renting for most of my life, okay?
I'm older than I look.
But, you know, you still have something left here.
Guys, let's keep it germane here. Let's not talk about hair.
Yeah, so, anyway, so, do you have any idea of what percentage of elementary school classes in Cupertino School District are like in temporary buildings, like trailer homes? What percentage?
I do not. I, unfortunately, because of the housing, I've been unable to start a family here, so I haven't even been able to look into that.
Yeah.
But I'm faintly aware that, in general, schools and everything are underfunded because of the tax structure that pushes cities into permitting that jobs-housing imbalance.
Yeah, it's about 33%. So, like, one every third class is held in a trailer.
A trailer.
Okay, and so, just to give a perspective of that, once you move in here, you will have kids. You will also have... You also need parks. You need everything, and it's not just about building houses. It's also about making sure, as a Planning Commission, that we have schools where kids don't study in 20-year-old trailers, okay?
That is... I completely agree that that is very, very important, but as the person before me pointed out...
Just to give you a perspective that, you know, we are being... And I think it's... In some cases, you're coming here because of the need for housing, and I hope you realize that most of the...
I'm going to get us back to clarification questions, if possible, but thank you for coming and really appreciate, and thank you for your public service in another city. Love to catch up with you another point and share notes. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
So, Brent Bardslay, if you're still here, thank you for coming, too.
Commissioners and staff. See, I was going to put this here and just read it. My name is Brent Bardslay in 1048 Menhart Lane. That's in the Rancho area. I've been a resident and property owner in Cupertino for 35 years, 25 years, like I say, on Menhart Lane, and about 10 years on Regnar Road. So, my concern... It looks like you have a kind of a tough nut to crack here. So, I'm not sure that I'm able to resolve any of the issues, and I don't know anything about the density and the parking lot ratios or anything like that or SB 35. I'm ignorant on most of those issues, but I do have a concern because a lot of your focus here appears to be on housing, and housing affects the schools very significantly because it adds new students to the schools, and parcel taxes pay for a percentage of the school budget. I think the Cupertino Union gives around $200 per parcel and...
I think the Cupertino union gets around $200 per parcel, and Fremont High School District gets about $98 per parcel. I believe those numbers are correct. So, you've been talking, you know, somewhere between 400 and 1,600 units of, of housing. And if those are rental units, those rental units do not generate those parcel taxes. The only owned property generates the parcel taxes. So, if you add 400 rental units, or 1,600 rental units, all those students are gonna be going to the school, but those parcel taxes are not gonna be there to pay for them. So, I'm very concerned about that, and it's also inequitable to the, to the property owners, who each property owner is paying the parcel tax. So, I think you don't have a plan to go forward with this project until you address that issue. I'm not suggesting how to address it, but you have to come up with the money from, to, so that, so that each of those families are contributing, or the property owner, or the developer is contributing to, to make up for those parcel taxes that aren't being added.
We're almost out of time. Would you like to get to your second issue as well?
Oh, okay.
Oh, you have three more, okay.
So, I'm, I'm not, so, I don't really have an opinion on, on the ratio of, of uses for the property, but it's important to me that the, that the city policed the issue, and policed the, the developer to make sure that the cost of the infrastructure is, is not passed on to the residents, but is, but is covered by the developer and the property owners. So, that's all, that's all that I have.
Thank you. We're out of time, but if you want to submit that, you can please submit that for record as well, your notes.
Okay.
Thank you. Doug Rowe, please come on up. Okay, Doug's not here. If he comes back, please let him know if someone knows who he is. Is it CoopRes or Co-opRes? I believe they're not here as well.
Yep, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
Mr. Chairman? I am a 23-year resident of Cupertino.
Cupertino resident.
I wanna echo back something that ex-chair Paulson said. We need a creative and innovative project. I think everyone would agree with that. Also want to give a shout-out to Josh Sello, West Valley Community Services, I guess.
He just left.
He left, okay, but he's looking for an economically diverse community that includes affordable housing. I am all for that. But how do we get there? That's the question. First of all, I think the city needs a reliable partner in development, shared power, and we need a long-term, sustainable housing plan that balances housing with jobs. You can't just keep creating more and more office space and not balance it. I heard some Commissioner Takahashi say, "We gotta give the developer a chance." I've heard that echoed from other people. This developer has had a chance, for years, and comes back with progressively worse projects, yet they get, you know, thrown down again and again. This is not a partner who's gonna create, innovate, and share power. So, I, I think it's a good idea to remove the 2 million square feet of office. That is something that I wish the previous commission had done and the council had partnered with in fourth quarter of 2017. We wouldn't be in the, the situation we are now with the SB-35 project. Missed opportunity. The original proposal for the office space was set to expire May 31st last year. Another opportunity missed. Don't wait, don't miss this opportunity again. Who knows what state laws are gonna come down and what, what mix will be in, in January 1st of next year? Now's the opportunity to do it. Get rid of that office. One thing that I don't understand about this proposal is upzoning for housing in any part of the property. Don't give this developer any of the goodies. Save it for a reliable partner. You give it to the current property owner, he'll make a windfall when he sells it, and it's gonna make it that much harder for a reliable partner to come in and work with the city to do something. Thank you, good luck.
Okay, In Green sides, please come on up.
Good evening. Today, in the media, it was reported that Commissioner Ray Wang had been previously convicted, a criminal conviction, for making harassing phone calls to someone who disagreed with him politically. He was also sued for sending email porn for sexual harassment. On social media, he has encouraged others to harass someone who disagrees politically at their workplace. He refers to folks who disagree as fascists. "Mr. Wang, your reckless behavior will likely get the city or yourself sued again." And Commissioner, I can't read your name from here because of my glasses, but you commented about the schools. The schools are shrinking because it's too damn expensive to live here. Your comments are gaslighting and incorrect. We need more housing to fill the schools that are shrinking. CUSD is becoming insolvent because of it. Downzoning the Valco site, if you look at the city of Half Moon Bay about 20 years ago, they down, they, they downzoned a site that was worth a couple million bucks. The damages in that lawsuit were about $20 million. The city faced insolvency. It took about 20 years to resolve. The Valco site is worth about $6 billion. You downzone that, and you get a lawsuit for downzoning it, you're gonna bankrupt this city. The impact from the damages would be catastrophic to the city of Cupertino. Voting to downzone was just as reckless as Mr. Wang's behavior, his continued behavior in public, and his comments during session. Please do not downzone Valco. And Mr. Wang, please resign. Get the city of Cupertino off of this reckless course of action.
Oh, thank you for being here. Appreciate your attention.
I'd just like to make one comment.
Oh, wait, hold on. What's, where's the procedure here?
Yeah.
Unless there's a constructive question to come out of the, the comment, there's no reason to engage with the commenter. So, if it's a question, I think that's appropriate time, but otherwise.
If you have a comment, if you need details, please ask.
Oh, well, just, the, I had a question about the school enrollment over the past two decades, and whether Mr. Greensides is aware of that. So, it's gone up about 40% with no increase in any of, or minimal increase in the infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Let's bring on our next individual. Rick Kitson, please come on board. Okay, I was asked, I made a great suggestion here to read the next name, so hold on, your time is still fine. Don't worry about that. Gene Bedord, you're next, so, just so you know, so, let's go.
All right. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Staff, thank you for being here tonight. My name is Rick Kitson. I'm Director of Communications for the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the chamber, I want to say, thank you for having this hearing on this very important subject. Now, in terms of important subjects, I'm not talking about Valco. I'm talking about the public process. Because of your service as commissioners, and certainly as your work as staff, there's no question of your commitment to that process, so thank you. We heard testimony about, from this item, from previous items, certainly about the passion people have about the process, and certainly about this topic. Now, on page nine of the staff report, I believe there's a reference indicating that notices were sent out to 96 residents within, who lived within 300 feet of the project. Certainly, that is, that's the legal standard, and no criticism is meant to staff to talk about how inadequate that is, considering the magnitude and importance of the general plan and Valco. We have approximately two dozen people here tonight, and so, I think it's important that we ask that smell test. Is this audience, is this engagement equivalent to the importance of the issue that you have before you? I would say, most people would say no. Having an important issue considered at a special meeting in the middle of summer, when most people, like me, should be either camping or packing to camp, which is actually a true story.
Sorry about that.
Maybe, maybe there's other times and a better process to have for this important issue. There are even better reasons to have a community-wide process for this. The general plan and Valco are documents that define the essential character and components of our community. The commission has an opportunity to show Cupertino what transparency looks like. Let's avoid the accusations of politically motivated legal maneuvering at a special meeting. The commission can avoid that smell test challenge and clearly endorse transparency. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and all of its businesses throughout Cupertino, thank you for each of you, for being on the commission, donating your time. What you do is important and certainly not easy.
Well, Rick, if there's an opportunity to connect in the future, please, let's do so.
Absolutely.
I think it's very important we keep that dialogue. Gene? And then who's next? Good question. Shelley Newkirk, I believe.
Good evening. Congratulations on not going as late as city council. It goes until 2:30, it went to 2:40 in the morning last time.
No clapping. Just want to make sure we get that that way. Thanks for the comment there.
My name is Gene Bedord, and I live in Cupertino. I am here to urge you to vote no on this resolution. As you have heard, it is not economically feasible. I went through the whole opticus process and listened to the economic consultant, and it's very clear, this resolution does not make sense. Furthermore, I am asking Chairman Wang to resign immediately from the commission. His harassment of neighbors and antagonism toward developers have been well documented on social media. Today, in the San Jose Spotlight, was posted a story about the charges of sexual harassment. This city should have zero tolerance for any type of harassment, whether it is neighbors, developers, or sexual. The first step in finding a workable development plan for Valco is your resignation. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate you being here. Shelley Newkirk, and then Lisa Warren is next.
Good evening.
Actually, is that pronounced correctly? I just want to make sure.
Me?
Yeah, you're right.
It's Newkirk.
Newkirk.
Like Captain Kirk, Newkirk.
All right. Thank you for coming.
So, good evening. This is my first time attending city government, and boy, it has been a fascinating evening. I wanna, I came because I have been watching, I'm a resident of Cupertino, and I want to say that although I live here, I don't work here. So, the office-to-job ratio is, I think, a fallacy. Jobs are where they are, people live where they choose to live, you go where, it's not all in the same place. But that is, I'm losing the point that I want to make. I think, I feel as though these resolutions, I don't understand the urgency. I don't understand the right-now nature of it. It feels very much like an end run, like an attempt to circumvent state law to ends that make no sense to me. You know, Commissioner Wang, you talked about how they could develop housing right now. I mean, the truth is, right now is still a two-to-three-year process. But the reality is, is the houses that this resolution puts forward is at most 28% of what we will get with a revitalized Valco. At worst, 16%. Now, that's fact-based numbers calculations. That is not something to be proud of. I also feel that we're not really paying attention to the world around us. We are surrounded in our country today by people who want to go back to a country that doesn't exist anymore. How we were in 1950 is not how we are in 2019. How it was in 2014 is not how it is in 2019. Truthfully, 100% retail does not work. Valco has been dying for years, and it died a slow and painful and really sad death. But the truth is, it doesn't work. What works is Stanford Shopping Center. What works is, oh, shoot. You hate it when you lose your train of thought, but what works is, yeah, I'm the one across the street from Valley Fair. Yes, thank you.
Santana Row, please.
Thank you, Santana Row. That's what works. I also feel as though this might be a little bit of remorse about Cupertino Maine. So, first, Cupertino has been known as the home of Apple, right? One of the most innovative companies in the world. We fast-tracked the spaceship, oh my goodness, what an incredible development. Then we built Cupertino Maine, and I understand there may be remorse about the office, about the balance between office and retail and housing, but the truth is, Apple filled it up. There are more than enough employees to fill up that space. There are, the jobs are here. There are people wanting to work. Companies are expanding. I work for a company, actually in Mountain View, it's not the one that starts with a G, that is continuing to grow at an, at an annual rate of 28%. The number of jobs that that brings to the valley is incredible. So, the people, there are jobs, we just need the office space to put them in. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to participate in city government, and I urge you very strongly to vote no against these resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley, for being here. Lisa Warren, and then Kim James, please.
Okay, I'm gonna jump all over the place, because what I'd planned to say has changed after listening to a lot of people, so please bear with me. First, I should say I support, for the most part, the four resolutions, with the exception that I believe you need to go back to 2014, 15, when the city surveyed residents and got the feedback, they don't have an appetite for heights, office, or decreased setbacks, you're decreasing setbacks here. And by going one-to-one instead of one-to-1.5, which is what it was and what people indicated they wanted, and I sent, three weeks ago, I sent you all documentation on those city-based surveys and white papers saying what residents wanted. Now, Reed Moulds can stand here or anywhere else and say what's before you is infeasible, but it's infeasible for the SHP, Sandhill Property Company, profit demands. It doesn't mean it's infeasible. There's something that can be done. Another person would do, and another developer may do another thing. It's been demands for more than five years from Sandhill, and in fact, someone made the comment about it being a different time, and that things have changed. They have, but you need to consider what's changed. First off, in 2014, 15, we had a different council and a different commission was commented on. Yes, we did. In November of 2014, when Sandhill thought they had this in the bag, they had a city council that was going to vote their way and answer their demands, despite the fact that the planning commission, which I believe, Alan, you were on, said, "No, don't do it." Council ignored planning commission, ignored Chair Brophy's very valid points, and was going to move forward. Thank God for a clerical error, and 300-plus people in this room asking for something better, it happened. So, we're coming back around to that. Is that going backward? I don't know, because what's happened in the meantime, traffic is now worse, jobs-to-housing ratio is worse, not only here, or potentially here, but in the region surrounding us. Other cities are building more offices and not enough housing, even when they're building a lot of housing. It's not going in the right direction. We're just multiplying everything, including the problem. Infrastructure is more strained. None of this mega-development, I don't even know how to, what adjective to use, is addressing these details. Yes, we all want housing, we understand the need for housing, but it doesn't do you a dang bit of good if your competition for that housing increases. Rents will go up. When competition is increased, you have more people, you have more people wanting it. It's wrong. It's.
Lisa, we're out of time as well.
Oh, good, there's so many more things. That's it. Can I say more? Economically diverse. Yes, I agree. In residents and in businesses, we can't have a one-company town. We can't have mom and pop and shops that we need and enjoy to be gone because someone bigger and not necessarily better has taken over.
Thank you for being here. Kim James, and then Susan Moore, please.
Hi, Kim James, Cupertino resident. I just had a couple things that I had thought about, decided to speak. So I also felt like, based on a lot of the things that you guys were talking about before the, opened it up to public comment, was that the city staff probably needs to come up with a better timeline of all the different things that have happened over the years to give us and you guys better clarification, 'cause it sounds like there was a little bit of issues with that. Number two, I went to the Shretts, I made my public comments, I've spoken at city council, I've spoken, I believe, here with the BMR program. So I feel like I was part of the process that made the decision, and I personally agreed with the prior planning commissions, Tier 1.5, if any of you remember that. So a little less office, but still the other stuff, and a little bit of the community benefits. And I feel, overall, between the city council mainly, but also, which leads into the planning commission, that we've got approximately 60,000 residents in Cupertino, about half are registered voters, and I think 60% voted in the last election, so figure those numbers. I feel like I was completely misled by what the actual people that got voted on to council gave the information to the residents about the referendums, and how we get to vote on what's gonna happen at Valco with Tier 2 or SB 35, and then they dropped the referendums. It's just been a mess, and everything's misleading. So I wanna end with, please re-listen to what Mr. Takahashi said about how divided our community is right now, and how this is a rushed process, which many other people have also said, like, where'd this come from? Why now? Why do we have to do this? I think it's just too rushed, and I want you guys to re-listen to the video and hear what he said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you for coming here, Kim. Susan Moore, please.
Can I see above the thing?
Oh, you can lower that, yes.
Can we see?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, Susan Moore, I've been a resident since 1980, but I have been in the area since high school. And I worked, I just was just gonna tell you that I support the four draft amendments as a citizen, because I want housing, I want citizen-sensitive businesses. But after hearing some of the comments by the developer, and some of the personal attacks on people, which are totally inappropriate, laughing, clapping at people, making fun of them, that's just, that's too much. So I just think that, I wanna say a few things. As I said, I worked in Palo Alto for 40 years. I saw this developer, what they, they were developing an area, and I saw what the citizens of Palo Alto had to do to fight, to get the things that they had been promised, grocery stores, you know, things like that. My mother lived in Sunnyvale, I saw what this developer did in some of the development in Sunnyvale, all the big concrete, and then we have our own concrete jungle, Main Street. We had a lot of promises with that. We have, it's not quite what we were promised. There's surgery center, public, you know, benefits, senior housing, yeah, the senior housing, we didn't get that. We have expensive lofts, you know, we don't, we have a few stores, and there's some nice restaurants, but a lot of concrete there, so. So I don't, you know, you can make fun of people, you can threaten, but I don't really see how this developer has really shown, in the past, even in our city, that they are for us, or reliable, or trustworthy. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any other comments from the public? I think we're done with our comment cards, and we have to enter the deliberation process here with our city council members. Attorney, and what's the proper process? Should we just go through each resolution, or we decide on that on our own, or deliberate against that? Are you guys okay with that? Make sure we're following the right process?
You could choose to deliberate further now, or you could move on to each resolution.
Each resolution? And we're gonna vote each resolution separately, I believe? Okay, let's, you wanna take a break? Or do you wanna deliberate? Where are you guys at?
Take a two-minute break.
Okay, sounds like we need a bio-break. Let's do a five-minute bio-break, and we'll come back and deliberate. Thank you, everyone, for your comments.